of the Gates County Board of Commissioners. I am Dr. Arthur Riddick, the twenty twenty two Chair of the Board. I am joined this afternoon by Vice Chair Linda Hoffler, Commissioner Jack Owens, Commissioner Jonathan Cratter, County Manager Tim Wilson, County Attorney the Honorable Mr. Pitt Godwin, Kirk to the Board Jaletha Chestnut, and IT Coordinator Warren Curry. At this time, I ask Commissioner Hoffler to lead us in prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand.
Heavenly Father, thank you for the blessings you have bestowed on this nation, the state, and our county of Gates. We pray that we will be your servants and that we follow as your teachings of being kind to one another. We pray for civility in our meetings. We pray for wisdom and sermon and help us all think before we speak. Help us make decisions that are in the best interest of all our citizens and to do what is best. All these things we ask in thy name for thy sake. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, whose true love for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and veritable in the highest of all.
If you're coming in late and you want to sign up for public comments, the clerk has the sign up sheet. If you're coming to make comments about, if you're a first responder to support the sheriff's proposal to transfer nine one one, that's a separate sheet. I don't want to get them mixed up. So I need the first responders, if you were going to make a public comment, to sign up on one sheet and others can, you know, sign up for the other comments. Of course, the other people can sign up. I mean, you can have comments about nine one one if you like, but I need to keep the first responders separate so we can get it in the minutes of who's saying what as far as the comments for nine one First on the agenda is approval of agenda.
Consent agenda or the whole agenda?
The agenda.
The agenda.
Not the consent agenda.
I've got a slight change in the consent agenda and on the agenda, the new business, the DSS Board Directors of Personnel and Salary, I think there needs to be a closed session.
No, sir, because the DSS Board has already met, chatted unanimously. As far as personnel, we can do that in an open session.
Okay.
We have the, I think we have a member of the board here, Mr. Owens?
Yes.
Is the board chair here?
The directors here.
The directors here. Is Mr. Jonathan Jones in the house? Okay.
Thank you. I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor? Raise your hand because I have to get these in the minutes for one of the, okay. Thank you. Now for the consent agenda.
Just a slight correction on under consent agenda B. It's recorded as Brian Miller, it's Brian Milteer. I just want to make sure that was recorded.
Changed that to Brian Milteer?
Milteer.
M-I-L-T.
That's for the Planning Board.
Okay.
I just want to make sure his name was correct.
Madam Clerk, make that correction.
Yes.
Any other corrections to the consent agenda? And that was June fifteenth.
Yes, ma'am.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as amended.
I second that.
Properly moving the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Let me stop right here and welcome Commissioner Freeman. I understand you've been ill. It's good to see you. All right.
Feeling better.
Thank you.
Looking better.
That's questionable.
I'll get a comment on that.
Public comment, Madam Clerk. I want the public comments, not the first responders right now.
Yes, ma'am. I want to make sure I get this name right. Joe Perfetto?
Mm-hmm.
Subject several topics.
Good evening. I have several issues. One, is the convenience center known as the dump. I've been very vocal on Virginia residents using our dump. Ms. White has submitted a proposal on how to handle that issue. The board has not made any determination on how to handle that issue. Also, Gates County pays more in fees for the dump than Boquemans and Chalene Counties. Number two, the water was cloudy a couple days ago. They said they cleaned the tanks. There was zero notification to the county on what was happening. So all of a sudden we have all this cloudy water and no one knows what's going on. Our tax dollars fund the police. One of the comments I heard with the, one of the comments I heard of made to the sheriff was that the effect of that we need a sheriff, but it doesn't have to be you. The sheriff was elected, not appointed. Whoever made that comment was wrong. The board, the board was elected also, and you work for us. Personal issue is grass cutting from the residents and county public works, blowing grass all over the streets. All right? It's unsightly and it's unsafe, especially for motorcycle riders. Gates County is one of the only counties that does not have a statute prohibiting that. Large trucks using our county road highways, they're destroying the roads. Do you see in the grass going on between the roads? Who's going to pay for those repairs? I've called the state police and the local sheriff's department to no avail. Okay? Well, I'd also like to know what's going on with that land you guys purchased for six hundred thousand dollars. What's it going to be used for? All right? What's going to be done about the VA residents using our convenience center? You're supposed to be the stewards, our tax dollars. They're using it and we're not going to compensate it for it. All right? Is this board planning on defunding our police department? It seems that way since you're not using any funds to purchase vehicles or using any money to enhance our police department. I'm just concerned. All right? And last, elections have consequences and we're stuck with Joe Biden and we're stuck with this board. Thank you much.
Next is DSS Director, Mr. Smith. Upcoming events.
Good evening, Chairman of the Board, Board of Commissioners, and County Residents here. To you all who do not know me, my name is Willie R. Smith III. I'm the Gates County DSS Director here. Just coming to you with a quick little bit of information. You all have the flyer and you should have gotten the email as well. In regards to the event we will be holding on November ninth at the Gates County Community Center, we will be hosting a community baby shower for expecting mothers and those with children under two. It will be sponsored by the North Carolina Medicaid vendors who provide Medicaid insurance to members who receive that. And so we are hoping that we do have some support from community members. Also, if you are interested in having a box where you can receive donations at your place of business, please give us a call. We're asking that people RSVP at our email, gatesdss@gatescountynorthcarolinnc, which means Gates County, n c dot gov. Also, you are more than welcome to make donations to, at our, at our office, but I just want to let you all know about that upcoming event. Also, lastly, we do have a Facebook page that is now open and available. Please feel free to follow it. We'll be providing community updates and outreach sort of that, of that nature. Outside of that, thank you all for your time and you all have a great day. And there are flyers right here for anyone that wants one for the community baby shower. So thank you.
Next is David Forside, Sheriff's Department.
Okay. Good evening again. My name is David Forside. I live at thirty seven Desert Road in Core Peak. I want to say good evening to the Commissioners, but also to the public, to the sheriff and his staff and other folks of interest. And I'd like to thank the sheriff for his continued enforcement of the laws of the county, state, and the nation despite the hurdles that have been put before him. I'd like to take note again that the apparent smoke and mirrors actions of not funding our sheriff with any capital line item funds in the budget and then asking him to request funds adjustments to an approved budget is a blatantly political move and an obvious defund the police movement like action in my opinion. And I would like to know when the county became so liberal, we're going to defund the police. I understand politicians come into office with agendas and you have certainly all have yours. However, this is one that's pretty transparent and screams for citizens of the county to show their displeasure by voting out next Commissioner Owens in the next election so as to break this minimal but apparently tyrannical majority you have in place now. It will have to be in subsequent election that citizens address the other two members not standing for election this cycle. This small, small majority's actions is exactly what John Adams feared with a single body government and why we have both the Senate and Congress to prevent this type of behavior at both state and national level. So the sheriff's asking for funds in the amount of one hundred thirty five K from what I've been told, but in reality, he should already have those funds. So I ask you, along with many other members of the public, to give him the funds that he so obviously needs. And I pose this question, did the county manager not include thirty five thousand funds the sheriff proposed for the capital budget that Commissioners request officially or unofficial? I'd love to know that. And if not, does he have an agenda against law enforcement or some other reason for not including it? I could imagine some ulterior motives like wanting or waiting for, or even helping along law enforcement's failures and hoping of getting someone you can control in the sheriff's position sometime in the future, or maybe someone getting some political recognition or hamstringing law enforcement for other politicians within the state or their party, or even for an individual to use it on their resume when they seek higher office. This seems plausible as thinking the county manager is incompetent and lazy, which doesn't seem to be the case. The fear of many, including myself, is that this year's forced budget amendments on behalf of the sheriff will be used by you to claim the sheriff's expenditures are a reason for the county overall budget exceeded and then use that as a reason to raise our taxes next year. So this trying to, I guess, blame law enforcement, claim the money should be used, you know, in better ways is typical for this whole law enforcement sweeping agenda that's, you know, hit our large urban areas across the nation. They're crime ridden. I mean, you look at Seattle where they burned down the city, burned police stations, blocked off parts of it. Chicago, New York, murder rates going crazy because we defund the police. And right here in Little Tinny Gates County, we seem to be trying to do the same thing. It's silly. So I think, and everybody here knows it, you can't have a sheriff's department that's non-functional and then cry the blues when you have crime. So check on that. On another note, the citizens are limited to a few minutes to bring issues up to the governing board, five minutes, and only at prescribed times you set. However, two political lobbyists are given a special meeting, speak casually for forty five minutes, receive a hearty handshake, and then there's casual talk about a water system and improvements for another twenty minutes. That's a clear mental picture for me. It's easy to see the comparative value you place on them versus us. Here's a suggestion. Fix the water line that starts at one seventy Desert Road and this fast running stream down the road that runs in the ditch daily, constantly. I've called to complain about this. Let's not wait until we get like Jackson, Mississippi, where they've done and put off repairs for so long saying, oh, that's too expensive, this is too expensive, to where now they can't power up their water system without breaks occurring everywhere. People don't have water. Let's not wait till that happens. Let's spend our money where we should, keeping water running for the people that need it, and also fund the sheriff so he can do his job, protect us, and not play political games. Make him ask for money that should be given to him.
Chris Sanders, Governing Board, Governing Board.
to the board, departmental administrators, employees of the county, and my fellow Gates County neighbors. My name is Crystal Saunders. I live here in Gatesville, about a mile and a half on one fifty eight Business East, in a home where the mortgage and taxes are up to date. On September twenty seventh, I will have lived here for forty two years. My maternal and paternal grandparents were native to this county. I've attended several Commissioner meetings, reviewed the YouTube recordings, and intend to participate in future meetings. The reason why I wanted to stand and speak tonight is because I have sat in these meetings and watched my countywide neighbors voice their concerns, yell insidious comments at the Commissioners, and twist facts to suit their cause. This is a business meeting. It's not personal. I have a bachelor's degree and a master's degree in biology, a master's degree in integrated studies, a postmaster's certificate in educational leadership. And while I don't officially have doctor in front of my name, I've completed all the coursework for my doctoral degree, less the dissertation. I only share this so that all will understand that first and foremost, I'm educated and well-versed, that I speak for me and only me, and I love facts, not fiction. I have three items I want to address. They are as follows. Number one, the Unity Monument. It's factual if all residents believe in racial equality. In eighteen sixty, there were three hundred fifty one thousand fifty nine slaves in North Carolina. In Gates County, there were three hundred and sixty one free African Americans, three thousand nine hundred and one slaves, four thousand one hundred and eighty one Caucasians in eighteen sixty. It has been said that North Carolina's economy didn't depend on slavery as much as the deep south, which is interesting because free labor is free labor. Number two, public safety. Law enforcement is necessary in this county and the world today. Public, the Public Safety Department, known as the Sheriff's Department, has a one point three million dollar budget for the twenty two, twenty three fiscal year, as retrieved from the Gates County Board of, Gates County Government's webpage. There wasn't a line item for a new vehicle in this year's budget. Three new vehicles were purchased in either April or May of twenty twenty one. Sheriff's Office received eighty four thousand in grant from the Department of Public Safety as recorded in Session Law one eighty, Senate Bill one oh five, and I quote, "shall be used for expenses incurred by the offices from enforcing the laws of this state and carrying out other duties set by the law." Approximately seven thousand of that eighty four thousand was used to purchase high-powered rifles and the remaining could be used for the purchase of a vehicle. There are at least three to four Sheriff's Department vehicles parked behind the courthouse that have been sitting there for at least a month in the same parking spaces that I have observed. The North Carolina General Assembly allocated twenty K for, twenty thousand for body cameras to the Gates County Sheriff's Office. I support our Sheriff's Office, especially when policies and procedures are followed and when the accountability and justification narrative is documented somewhere. Number three, Board of Commissioners, the governing body for Gates County. Thank you for developing and approving the capital improvement plan during the September seventh special board meeting as required by the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, DEG, in order to be able to apply for the asset inventory and assessment grant that will be utilized for water and wastewater utilities to become more viable and more proactive in the management and financing of our system that is due September thirtieth, twenty twenty two. Special thank you to Commissioners Hoffler, Owens, and Riddick, along with Mr. Brad Arnold, Utilities Director, and Ms. Kim Outland, Finance Officer, for attending the mandatory and necessary online training for the NCDQ AIA grant that is to be turned in on September third, thirtieth, twenty twenty two. Thank you, Dr. Riddick, for being the broadband project leader for fifteen counties and for your tips, your trips to Raleigh to plead the case for Gates County residents by securing three point six million in broadband funding. Thank you, Dr. Riddick, and the Albemarle Housing Commission, along with those committee members, for the collaborative work done to provide current home repairs for our elderly and/or low-income residents. Thank you, Board of Commissioners, and Mr. Anthony Saunders, for your due diligence in showing that the twenty eighteen CDBG grant monies were utilized. As a result, two residents are living in their new homes, another almost complete, and the last soon to follow as a result of the budget amendment during the last Commissioners' meeting to ensure that the homes get completed as well. Neighbors, while this board isn't a perfect board, it is a working board. My advice to all board members is that for the betterment of the county, I would employ that you work together by agreeing to disagree on some topics, by agreeing to disagree on some topics. And to my neighbors, if you aren't going to be a solution to the problem, don't be the problem. Thank you, Commissioners, for your service.
Commissioners, County Manager, Mr. Godwin, I'm Wade Askew from your, at the last meeting, I gave y'all a good free history lesson. And the Unity Monument does have a true lie on it. North Carolina was a pro-union state. And that, that it succeeded to preserve the institution of slavery was entirely wrong. It should be corrected. And I don't care who pays for it, the county or the Commissioners, can take it out of their own pockets and pay for it. But as I was sitting back there, I was looking at the picture of George Washington and some of the acts or things that have taken place on Board of Commissioners. I just wonder, if those gentlemen could come down from that picture and stand in front of you, would they be proud to come by and shake your hands at some of the things that y'all have done? Or would they turn the other way or maybe just knock you sidewinding? That's for y'all to decide. But the way y'all have treated our sheriff, you know, some night or someday, you may call that nine one one, and then you may call it again. And then you may wonder, why is the sheriff not here? Well, if he don't have a vehicle, he may not show up. And then you're going to be sitting there saying, well, the sheriff is at fault. But no, the sheriff is not at fault. It's the county manager that's at fault because he hasn't give the sheriff the money and Board of Commissioners that the sheriff needs to operate. Just like at our water department. A nice lady that was working at the water department, yes, you sabotaged her. You knew there were employees that were coming off, that were retiring. Did you do anything about it? No, you did not. You left piles and piles of work to go undone by people that should have been reading meters when you didn't hire anybody to read meters. Was that my fault? No, it wasn't. It was negligence on the manager's fault. And Mr. Manager, I know your background. I had, my cousin was the manager, the mayor of Nagstead when you worked down in that area. I believe you like to take off and go fishing once in a while, don't you? But anyway, what I'm getting to is that I don't believe you're here for the interests of the people in Gates County. I believe you're here for the interests of your own self. Because I'm a taxpayer, and if I need to talk to the county manager, every citizen of this county has a right to. And you have closed the doors to the citizens of this county. And people need to be able to talk to the county manager on, on time. And I believe every county has the, has the same right, the people have the rights to talk to the county manager. And that's all I've got to say. Thank y'all for what you do, but you need to do a better job. Thank you.
Mr. Edward Webb.
Good evening, folks. My name is Edward Webb. I live here in Gatesville. Y'all all know me, spent time with me, have worked with me in some of you in the past. Of course, I'm coming to you for the Sheriff's Department tonight. I'm going to dig up some bones, as a one song that was out called Digging Up Bones. I've been with the Sheriff's Department since early eighty five. I worked with them back as a deputy. I was sworn in, was one of the proudest days of my life. I was able to work through and I've worked with different agencies around this area. Right now, I'm at thirty seven years toting a badge and gun in this part of the state. While I was sheriff for almost twenty years, I had nine different county managers. I had lord knows how many different board members. Jack, you remember some, Sherwood Easton, J.S. Pierce, William Harrell, Mr. Rowntree, different ones that we all worked together. We might have disagreed on things, but we worked it out. We had county managers that were willing to sit down and discuss things with the people that he, that worked with them. And I know, Mr. Wilson, you're a smart man. I know you probably know the statutes, but we don't work for you. We don't work for you. We work for these folks. We hire and fire at will, and we have the reasons for that. That way nobody can say we're showing any part of the wisdom to anybody. Your sheriff is a good man. I've known him since he was fifteen years old, and he has worked hard at his job. And I have never in my entire career seen a county manager treat not just a sheriff, but all his employees the way you do. When a man comes up and talks to you, tries to explain something that has gone on, when they've had a chase, they have caught a convicted felon that's wanted in two or three states, they end up having to use force and the force of a car, he gets wrecks them, and he tries to talk to you about it and you turn and walk away. Never seen so much disrespect. They spoke about Ms. Diane Hendricks, one of the best employees that Gates County has ever had, ever had. She gave her life and soul to this county. She loved this county. She was your only threat. Because when she was here, she was internship as a county manager prior to you coming. Y'all have all worked on things, and I'm talking addressing the whole board, not all of you. But I'm just saying this. You bought six hundred thousand dollars worth of property that won't even perk. You can't get the Sheriff's Department cars. I would like to know what you all have done since you all have been in place, what you all have accomplished. We still carry our dogs to Cho One County. We carry our trash to Boquemans County. The poor sheriff has to find a place to put his prisoners from all the way to Northampton County to Lisbon City, Cho One. And I remember days when I'd have to travel all the way to Washington. We need some help, but y'all are on the wrong agenda. You're headed in the wrong direction. And I've said that before. Mr. Wilson, I've always heard that you were from NC State. And I've always had known that folks from NC State had some plain old common sense, if nothing else. I'm beginning to doubt that now. Anyway, thank you all. I appreciate it. Y'all have a good evening.
Good evening to everyone. I'm here to say to this Board of Commissioners, thanks. Thanks for securing the grant to bring better broadband to this county. Thanks for attaining the funds to fix the roof at the community center. I have walked in there many a times and seen coolers and buckets catching the rainwater. Thank you for the program to repair several homes in this county. Thank you, those of you who travel around this state to acquire the help we need in Gates County. I know some of this time is your time that could be spent doing something else, but you take this time to help our county. And I want to thank you for your attempts to bring more business into this county. We have lost a lot of business- We have lost a lot of businesses in my lifetime. All the mom, pops businesses are gone. Everybody remembers our Jimmy BBQ. We had a Ford and Chevrolet dealer. No more. We had a Zena television place. All of these places are gone and have not been replaced, and we're wondering why we're about to lose the bank in some areas. We need businesses if we're gonna keep banks, so I say thank you.
Mr. Arnold Wright.
Good evening, Dr. Riddick, board members. I'm gonna be brief. Tonight, I'm gonna go back to a subject I brought up in the fall, excuse me, in the winter, the funding of a fire academy. And this is me personally, I don't represent any fire department, anybody, I'm a firefighter, asking that you would help the school board have the funding to get somebody job-ready when they graduate from high school. Right now, you can go anywhere in tidewater as a certified firefighter and be employed. And I know that for a fact, my sons are working double shifts because of that, and they're 200 down in Norfolk. Portsmouth is down, Navy Regional is down. If you could help fund that in three years, when they walk out of high school, they can go to a good-paying job with benefits, though it might not be in Gates County. I'd like to thank you for the purchase of the radios that you did, starting us on a new path for our communications. They seem to be working good. We're gonna have some problems with dead zones and antennas, but you might not be aware, and it's something we're checking into, the general statutes of North Carolina, if we did our things right, whenever a cellphone provider came near, provides in the statutes for reduced price for antenna space. Antenna space is a premium, but if you can get it at a reduced price, now most of them are fiber-fed. So that's a plus for us as emergency responders somewhere. Plus, we have a water tower in Wellington that a radio repeater would work great for that little dead zone up there. These are some things to look at, especially if you can get it at a reduced price with the cellular companies. Thank you for what you're doing, and the water, I'm glad you finally started to work on that, and I look forward to when I test bi hydro, then I've got the pressure I need, the amount of water I need. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Gary Gibson.
Good evening, everyone. My concern is the water bill. Ever since I've been back in the county, wherever it goes up, I try to pay. But recently, I got my water bill, and it's up. I inquire about it, and they said they estimate the prices on the water meter. And I went to the, I thought I had a leak, I went to my meter, it was covered in dirt, so you can't read the numbers up there. And with this estimating, people water bill, can the water bill up? What happened to the money, you know, that they're overpaying? Are the people gonna get it back, or how are they gonna do that? And I am concerned about that because everybody's not on the same, don't have the same income coming in. There's a lot of people out here struggling. So this estimating things, I think that is wrong. And another thing, you know, Gates County don't have a whole lot for the citizens here. Seniors don't have, we go every other county that have things that the seniors can go and enjoy, but Gates County don't have the lack, they're taking away everything and then begin to estimate the price. So I, you know, I think that is wrong when they start estimating people's bill, not getting the right price, what it's supposed to be. So thank you all.
Hello, I'm Ann Askew of 216 Martin Road, Yore. Thank you for letting me come and speak. There's several things on my heart. One of them is Sheriff Webb, and the other one is Diane Hendricks. What y'all did to her is uncalled for. Nobody should have to go through that. Nobody. And what you're doing to Sheriff Webb, not what Sheriff Campbell? I just wondered, what do y'all own? Wondered if the sheriff has four drug tests he can come up here and give y'all? Because if y'all fail him, y'all must have taken a stupid pill or something. Thank you.
Emily Truman.
First off, just want to say, Ms. Jo, we are glad to have you back. You've been missed, and we're glad to see you. Don't really have much to say tonight, except what is obviously the big thing on the agenda for the night, and just really hoping that you can put aside some differences and personal feelings and do what's best for our county by giving the sheriff what he needs to do his job effectively. Because by giving the sheriff what he needs, you're giving the citizens what we need, you're giving yourselves and your loved ones and your friends what you need. When you call them and you need them, and they don't have the proper equipment to get there or the things to do to do their job, then it's too late to fix it. It's happening to some people now, to where they're calling for help with various departments in the community, not just the Sheriff's Department, and things are having to be put aside, be pinned, be put further out, because they're not having the funding to properly care for our community. You should take from everything else to give to our first responders, and it's not happening. You should take from a furniture request. You should take from land purchases. You should take from unnecessary expenditures and give to all of our first responders, the Sheriff's Department, the rescue squad, the fire departments, the dispatch center. Because when it comes down to it, they are the backbone of this community. And you are supposed to be a part of this community, representing this community, and your loved ones live in this community. When they call for help, you're gonna expect them to be there. And at this point, sometimes, it doesn't seem like they can be. Also, in regards to that number of vehicles sitting behind the Sheriff's Department, that number's gonna continue to grow as long as they're unsafe for our officers to operate. To ask them to operate a vehicle that isn't functioning properly, that puts their life at even more risk than what they're already doing by serving our community, it's not reasonable. And I also want to address one other thing, because I have personally been asked, why do I have such a hardship against some people on this board? Namely, the middle four that I get asked about. And I'm just gonna say, it's because you have repeatedly refused to put aside differences between each other to work together. There is nothing but taking shots at people and throwing things under the bus, throwing people under the bus to get your personal agenda put out there. Sitting there and stating that when Commissioner Freeman and Commissioner Craddock didn't take a mandatory training or such, that's not true. You only had to have one. It actually saved our county money to not have all five of the Commissioners and the county manager do that. So I thank them for making sure that it was handled by the one person that was required and not costing us more money by going through with something that was not necessary. I hope that y'all can do the right thing tonight and restore our faith in you.
Kimberly Johnson.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. A lot of y'all know me, I'm Kimberly Johnson. I live at 127 Sony Lane, Gatesville, North Carolina. I've been living in Gates County for about seven years. This is my actual first time coming to a Commissioners' meeting. What brings me here is my conversation with Mr. Jack Owens in regards to the Sheriff's Department. I called Mr. Jack Owens about four weeks ago, and our conversation that we had was, I asked Jack, what's going on? Why isn't the sheriff, why can't the sheriff get the funds he needs? Mr. Owens replied, verbatim, all he has to do is throw out a form, take it across the The money is there. Simple, right? I want to see you standing behind your words. This is election time. Yes, I think a lot of you. But what's right is right, and what's wrong is wrong. You all take the Sheriff's Department, it seems to be like a joke. As you said, I quote, "I don't want to get in the catfight." Well, that's your job to get in the catfight. Your job is to stand behind that sheriff. He is an elected official. Ask for you. Mr. Wilson, you need to do your job. You need to work with the Sheriff's Department, not fight against it. We live in a world today where you hear on the news, right across this line, just, did anybody see the news the other day? All the people calling in for school shootings? That sheriff ain't got what he needs. And these children are in school, and an active shooter enters one of these schools. How is he gonna protect our children? What if it was your son or your daughter? What if it was your grandchildren? Your nieces, your nephews? Would you blame the sheriff then, because he doesn't have what he needs? No. Because he's asked for it. That'd be a heavy burden to carry on yourselves, to have to look in the mirror and say, if I'd have done the right thing, if he'd have had what he needed, this could have been avoided. There could have been less casualties. No, it hasn't happened in Gates County, and I pray to God it never does. But this is the real world. Just because you're a small county doesn't mean anything. What it means is you need to be prepared. So I'm asking you to give the sheriff what he needs. Stop the fighting between you. Do what's right for the people of this county. And if you can't, resign. Thank you.
J.D. Harrell.
Good afternoon. I'm Joe Harrell from Taylor Mill Road in Yore. Good to see you. Thank you for what you do. And being a Commissioner is a duty. I've never been one. I know each one of you want to do the best job you can, but it also carries a duty, a fiduciary responsibility. And so with that, you take what you have, make the best of it, and manage what you can. And sometimes, these are not easy choices. To have a good economy, as I respect these people that have come up here and asked about jobs and businesses and what was in the county many years ago, kudos to those people, because we had it, it's gone away, and now we seem to be in a cycle of asking for grants, going to grants, hiring grant administrators. And like I said before in my last time up here, a grant is a wonderful thing, but it's like a dependency. A grant is like, almost like an alcohol or drug dependency. It'll get you out in the short run, and all that's fine, but what happens when the grant runs out? The solution to endless grants is to have a good economy. And so with the economy, you got a tax base, you got a lot of people paying into it, even real little people, not important people, but just everybody's paying into it. And so then you get a better community, people interacting better, and so you have a sustainable economy, and then you don't have to go and get on the teat of big government grants and everything. And every grant that I've seen, with a few exceptions, had stipulations. And the bigger the grant, the more federalized the grant, the more the federal government comes in here and tells us what to do. And so during COVID, it was a prime example of what little Gates County came to. The people have said Gates County doesn't have a food line, Gates County doesn't have a big box store. Well, if you want a food line, you can go 15, 20 minutes. If you want a big box store, you can go 20, 30 minutes. But what Gates County had was a grocery store, there was an independent business that didn't get the supplies cut off because the owner and the management worked their tails off getting stuff. I went down there when my family couldn't get stuff, everything locked up, and there was people in Gates, North Carolina, from New York City, down here buying food. People panicked. We have what other people want. And a piece in the index a couple of weeks ago, and Ms. Hoffler, Commissioner Hoffler touched on it, our out-of-county visitor spending was up 65%. If we're such a bad place, and we don't have a food line, and we don't have a Starbucks, and we don't have 100 meg's of internet right that minute, why does everybody want to come here when they get in about? Why are we hell-bent on bringing federal problems to Gates County so we can set up an administrative state? We've been good to get along, we can manage ourselves. No, we don't have everything, but we have good people here, black, white, green, purple, blue, whatever. And all this stuff of hate and vengeance, reparations, the Civil War, 98% of the people in the Civil War that set the black people free were white. So why do you get on that all the time? People are tired of that game. They want to get along, they want to have a good place for their families. And so with that, we don't have the big box stores. We can get to in 15 minutes. I can go see my uncle up outside of DC in Virginia. I can go three blocks in 20 minutes and might get to a McDonald's and might get waited on. You know, Starbucks, fine, I've got good coffee at my house, I'll go up to the restaurant, get great coffee, get good service, fine. We need more of that. We need the car dealership, we need the repair garage. Thank God for what we got, let's don't lose it. History says that when a nation's tax base exceeds 35%, that the nation starts struggling. We're way past that. We raised our county taxes 5.8% in the onset of a recession, maybe depression. So you keep adding on to the local people to pay, and after a while, they can't pay. Okay, we'll go get a grant. Grant runs out, what you gonna do then? When you load yourself up with a lot of services that are law-binding, and then you run out of money, the local people gonna run out of money. And so you can't sustain it. We could wind up becoming a wasteland. Right now, we are where people want to go, for peace, for good law enforcement, if you'll support them, for low crime, if you'll take advantage of it. Every five minutes, somebody's dying from fentanyl. It's coming up from China, through the south border. It's up here, we've lost people due to it. So you got to pay attention to what's real and what's achievable. And so are we going, the thing is, it's choices. And you have to look somebody in the eye and say, we can't do it. But watch your money. Quit dollying that money to pay someone to do something that we could do ourselves and everything. And so grow your local economy. We got wonderful people all around, neighborhood communities all around us, especially Virginia, Lisbon City, and we could have a commission to actually have good businesses here. I didn't say a nuclear waste site, I said a good-paying business. So most of our income is from other counties, and that's the way it's always been, but we can improve on that. We've lost so many businesses, we can improve. So our choice, our fiduciary choice, your choice, my choice, everybody, it's a choice. Are we gonna be an administrative state? Or are we gonna be that great place that people love to live and want to live here to raise their families, to have a good, fair income? And so it's time to choose. So with that, have a good day.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for all the comments. And I'm going to address some of those before I close today. Because I hear things and I write it down. And I circle back around to it. So some of the things that you say at the public comment, I'm going to address because some of it is just misinformation. It's not true. And I got documentation to share with you at the appropriate time, especially about your water and your wastewater and what's going on in this county. And so I'm going to stay with the agenda. Won't be long. And we have, and to those that's waiting for, the sign up for the first responders, I want you to just hold on to the sheriff, you know, comes up so you can support him as far as their proposal. That's why I'm asking you to wait so you don't get in that. So we won't get that in a minute. Public hearing. Fiscal year 2024, Community Transportation Grant Application, Patrice Lassiter, Gits Director. I need a motion to open the public hearing for fiscal year 2024, Community Transportation Grant Application. Ms. Lassiter? Oh, she's already up here. I need a motion to open.
Move.
So move. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Good afternoon, Ms. Lassiter.
Good afternoon.
I think you have that in your packet. If you have not read it, I think she's going to give us a broad overview. I think you come up here every year for renewal.
It's such an interesting reading. Yes. I do want to make a comment about one thing. The combined capital this year, I had put $8,000, $80,000 in, was just an estimate or guesstimate because the state has not got the contracts approved for vehicles at this time, so they're not doing that. And I had put that in hopes of not having to do another public hearing. But because of the vehicles that we didn't get from last fiscal year, are going to have to go on to this year. We will have to come back and do a public hearing for that. So I'm not asking for you to approve the capital portion of the grant at this point. Only the administrative portion and the 5310 elderly funds. So this year, we're requesting $108,535. And the local match for that is $16,280. Of course, we use our local match. We put reserves because they require us to have the money when we ask for the grant. But we usually have enough funds that we generate to make that match. And the administrative fund pays for our rent, our utilities, some of our salaries. So that's what we're asking for. It's no real changes from any other year. And what I would like to request is to have two different motions. One to approve the Community Transportation for 5311 and one to approve the elderly grant. The elderly grant is monies that we use that we provide transportation, which is kind of a through-door service for our elderly and disabled. And those funds are used for people who cannot get on the van with people that go earlier or people who need us to come to their door instead of doing curb-to-curb. And we are requesting $80,000, of which $40,000 is a match. The match that we use is the state funds, which are road funds, which is the $40,000. So actually, there's no other funds. And that's really the gist of the application this year.
Is there anyone down for public input for the public hearing, Madam Clerk?
No.
Need a motion to close the public hearing with no further comments?
So move.
Sure.
So you have two. Do you have any, I don't know if I have any questions about what you said, have any in your packet? And this is done every year. So you have two motions to approve. The first one is, Madam Clerk? Repeat.
For the Community Transportation Administrative Grant.
Okay.
And the amount of...
I make a motion that we approve the Transportation Grant.
And I'll second that motion.
We have a motion to approve in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And the second motion was?
5311.
For the 5310 elderly transportation funds.
5310 elderly transportation fund. Do I have a motion?
Make the motion we approve that. I'll second that.
It's been properly moved in second. Did you get that, Madam Clerk?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for this.
Thank you.
Teresa, I'd like to ask one question if I may. Has it moved all the vehicles to propane?
We are not at this point because we don't have, we're actually having a difficult time getting the vehicles that we have serviced. There are some places that are. Right now, we actually can't get vehicles, period. So it probably will come later on. But for this area, we don't really have the services that we need to...
Motion to close.
Excuse me?
We close.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Madam Chair, you need a formal motion to close the public hearing. I'll make that motion. And I'll second that motion.
Properly moved in second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Brad Arnold, Director of Public Utilities. He's going to give a public utilities overview. Every meeting that we have, he will get an overview of what's going on with our water and wastewater, not just with the grant itself. But every meeting we have, he will come to you as the Director of Public Utilities. Not only that, we're going to provide a website, a web presence, so we can post what's going on, that Brad decides what to put on the website. We're also going to be looking into some type of software, whether he's doing and his staff is doing repairs like flushing and treating and low pressure. You will know about it. This is a, this is a project that's going to be a long time coming. So I'm going to let him start off with an overview of what's been going on for the last 30 days. We're coming to the end of that grant writing as far as September the 30th, and then I will come back and make some statements of facts.
Good afternoon, board members and county manager.
Step back into the mic, Brad. I know you're tall.
Sorry. Just to give a quick overview of what's been going on as far as the grant proceedings. I've been working very closely with Green Engineering every day, six or seven times a day, you know, very thoroughly throughout the day. Been giving him numbers he's been asking for as far as gallons produced versus gallons sold. All of that is part of the grant application. We've been working out, they're actually, Green Engineering is actually sending out a, like a team to go through and point out meters and to get roughly 10% to 15% of our meters to find out how accurate they're reading, broken meters, serial numbers, and age of the meters. That's also part of the grant application. They need that information to, it helps score more points as far as the application process goes. They were supposed to come down today, but one of the, one of the guys that was supposed to come got sick, so they had to turn around and go back. So they'll be here tomorrow and Friday. As far... That's pretty much all I can, the information I can give as far as the grant right now. Most of it, the biggest part of it, has been written. They've been waiting on a few odds and ends from us, Daphne, and the billing section. We're trying to get some numbers together and get that information to them. But it's about 80% done as far as, per my conversation with Mr. Tark this morning. And as far as maintenance goes, we had a long list of taps that we were waiting on, parts and supplies to come in. Those have come in. We had 11 taps. Seven of those have been completed.
Water taps?
Water taps, service taps, water service taps. Seven of those have been completed out of the 11. We will pick back up on that next week. We have four remaining. I got my supplies in this afternoon to start working on water leaks also. We have quite a few water leaks, 15 that I'm aware of. I didn't have the supplies to fix them, but I got that in today, and we're going to start that next week also. Gates County Water Tower.
Gatesville. It's a Gatesville Water Tower.
The Gates County Tower. At the water plant on Water Plant Road. Has a southern corrosion, which is the contractor that come down, that we hired as a contractor, tank maintenance contract. They have got Gates County, they got the Gates Tower painted, sandblasted, painted, the inside washed out, and sanitized, and is back online. So just make a little comment as far as the water quality. I'll turn, talk to the public. The cloudiness you see in the water is air. If you take a fill a jar up and sit it on the counter in 30 seconds, it'll go away. The water is safe. It's nothing wrong with the water. We do 10 back-end tests per month to ensure that the water quality is good to green. So there's nothing harmful in the water. It just essentially doesn't look good. You may have a little bit of brown water here and there, and that's due to a little bit getting in the system when the tanks first brought back online. But that'll clear up as well. But as far as safety of the water, the water's fine. There's nothing harmful in it.
May I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
I work for a city with an office of water plant. And the water that you're saying, when it's cloudy, hot, sets for 10 minutes, it go away? I've had it set for over two hours, and the cloudiness never look away. Can you explain that part?
I can't explain that part, I'm sorry. It should go away within 30 seconds. But if you'll give me your name and address, I will find out.
Well, it's the lady across the street, and the lady next door, that there was a sign. We live down here off the corner of Gates.
Okay.
Well, 30 seconds.
Brad, you're going to have to speak in the mic because the people on live stream, mic can't hear you.
I'm sorry.
But if you will give him your address so he can...
Yes, if you'll give me your address, and I will address that tomorrow. I can meet with you tomorrow.
I'll get it.
Okay. All right. Also, the raw water tank at the Gates, Gatesville, no, excuse me, not Gatesville. The water plant has also been washed out. Southern corrosion also did that. There was, we drained the tank. When they opened the tank, it had anywhere from four and a half to six feet of dirt and sand in the bottom. All of that has been cleaned out. It's been washed out. It's also been sanitized with chlorine, and that has been brought back online. So there may be a little bit of sand in your water here and there, but that should clear up pretty quick. There's no way to really, we try, they try to wash it out and run it through a drain and run it through a ditch to clean it out the best they can. But sometimes a little bit still gets in the water. But that shouldn't be a very bad issue. And also on another note, Sunberry Tank is slated to be cleaned out, sanitized, and washed Monday. So you may, the citizens may see reduced pressure. You shouldn't see any air in the lines, no milky or bubbly water. You may see a little bit of discoloration, but that shouldn't, that should dissipate very, very quickly. That's all as far as the maintenance upgrades that we have slated for, I think, till the first of next year. Then they're going to pick back up on the tanks and start painting and cleaning out Hazleton. As far as the sewer size goes, we're currently under a notice violation due to the new SBR plant, well, not SBR, but SBR stands for Sequencing Bats Reactor not being online. I have reached out to Aqua Aerobic Systems. They got me in touch with Hayward, which is the software company that's going to come. They sent me a quote for a assessment. The quote was for $2,000 for the assessment. I have gotten a PO, and they also sent, that is to assess what's wrong. I don't know exactly what's wrong until they come assess everything and look. Then I'll know where to start from as far as what it'll cost and what it'll take to bring it back up where it'll operate correctly. After all that is complete, they have also sent a, provided to do a two-day training for everybody in the water and sewer to bring everybody up to date, teach people how to run it, teach staff how to run it, what to look for, how to maintain the proper levels. That comes with a cost of $4,000 for two days. It's $2,000 a day. I have also gotten a, requesting the money from the Finance Department, got approved for that also. And that is pretty much it up to date on the water and sewer. Unless you have any questions you want to ask me that I may have missed that y'all want to know.
Okay.
I have a question. Have you heard anything from DEQ about the fines they were going to impose on wastewater?
There, well, I haven't heard anything about a fine. They have extended the timeframe for us to get a compliance. And the county is showing due diligence towards that, and they're honoring that so far. So I have spoken with both inspectors, and they're, they're working with the county as far as that goes. So I'm not aware of any fines that's going to be imposed.
Okay. I was contacted by Green Engineering a couple of weeks ago as the Chair of the Board. And they are doing their due diligence to try and get this application in. They're having a hard time. And they're having a hard time because we don't have in place the documentation we need. So they're having to do the best they can with what they can discover in Gates County. We talk about grants. What's needed in this county right now for our water and wastewater is $8.9 million. Because for years, didn't start last year. Didn't start the year before. For years, there was deferred maintenance. And in recent years, there was no maintenance. It's not the 40-year system. If you keep the maintenance up, hey, you can keep up with the repairs. You can keep up with the water leaks. You can keep up with the meter replacement. We didn't do that. And I was called because they said it's time that Gates County understand their water system and what happened to their water system. Mr. Arnold and his people have done an excellent job, and the staff in this county, trying to get them the information they need, trying to prepare what we can to get back so we can continue to have water. The assessments he's talking about in the application is to replacement of Gatesville AC lines and water tank. That's in Gates. We took over Gatesville in 2014. We took over their water system. The application for rehabilitation of the existing NGD WWTB received from the prison. You know where the prison is? Okay, this is wastewater. Application to fund approximately 4,638 meters, of which approximately 1,000 are not functioning with the right technology. And you heard Mr. Bright talk about radio feed. We're trying to get it to the point it's remote. $2 million at least to replace them. This did not start last year, didn't start two years ago, didn't start three years ago. I want Mr. Arnold to talk about estimating. And what are you doing? Are we reading mil, meters? No, no.
Yes, we're currently reading meters. Um, as far as high bills go, um, you're, you're getting the high bills, not, well, estimating is part of it, but you're getting the high bill because your meter was actually read. Um, you either get a high bill or a low bill, whether it was overestimated or underestimated. Um, we currently, we read every meter last, in, half of the meters last month, we're reading the other half this month, we should finish up Monday, as far as reading meters go. Um, so there will be more high bills coming out, um, and I think that the billing, the billing staff has, has worked well with the customers when they call about doing adjustments. Um, it's not y'all's fault that your bill, that your water meters was estimated. Um, I've been through this before at my previous employer, um, so, we can't, we don't hold you, the customers, liable for that, it wasn't your fault. Um, so, we have been adjusting bills, and a lot of the bills we have been adjusting to the flat rate, but, once we get all the meters read, get them read properly, then we'll have a baseline to start from where we can move forward, uh, where you'll be getting the correct bill, you know, every other month. So, bear with us, it's been a hard, it's been, it's been a struggle trying to find them, everybody in public utilities is new, um, including myself, so, we've had issues, and I've had to call upon prior employees, retired employees, and Timmy as well, to get information where, where things are at. Um, but we're, we're getting it straight, and I would appreciate y'all's patience, and feel free to get in contact with me, you can get in contact with me by email, or you can call the office and leave, and they'll, you can leave a message. Um, I'm open, I'll tell it to you, and explain to me anything that I don't have to explain.
Mr. Arnold, didn't you say they were pulling meters on to test, to see right now whether they're under red or over red?
Well, they're not actually pulling the meters, they're just, they're looking at the meters, getting the serial number, and they're running the serial number in a database to get age. Um, that's the first step. Second step, they would be, they would come in, replace ten to fifteen percent of our system, they would send those meters off, get them tested, and that'll give me what accuracy they're reading at.
And they could be under reporting or over reporting, we don't know which.
Correct, yes, but generally, rule of thumb is the older the meter, the slower, so it's, it's under reporting, but it could go either way.
Um, I heard you say while ago, uh, gallons produced versus gallons sold, how far off was?
We're sitting at about, right now, about thirty-seven and a half percent water loss.
Thirty-seven and a half percent.
About, about a third of our water we're losing, due to leaks and inaccurate meter reading.
And how many gallons a day is that? Uh, uh, not lost, but how much do we produce a day?
Per day, we're averaging anywhere from nine hu- nine hundred and fifty to a million gallons of water a day.
gallons, thirty-seven percent.
On, on a monthly, we average about twenty-six thousand gallon, oh, excuse me, twenty-six million gallons a month, and we're billing for, um, about fourteen or fifteen million gallons of that.
The engineering company, because I'm, I have to move on, but I have to address some other things that they, I've, I've been asked to, we're going to do the best we can to not patch this system, we're past the patching, we're past the kicking the can down the road, we are past that. We are losing revenue because of what was not done, we are spending dollars because of what was not done, and we are going to feel it in Gates County because of what was not done, and to villainize the people who are working right now to fix it, to do the assessment by an engineering company that know what they're doing. Mr. Arnold is credentialed, his staff is, is either credentialed or being credentialed because the state is driving this, we are on the distressed unit list, so, business as usual is not going to be allowed by the state. This board is being directed by the state. And let me trust, let me address training, training doesn't cost us a thing, we got a two thousand dollar grant, because those, those courses we took were seventy-seven dollars apiece, and in, in, in the requirement, it was we had to have at least two board members, the director of the, of Public Utilities Department, and the director of Finance. They strongly, strongly encourage that all board members be trained so they can understand what the issues are, so when we vote, we know what we're voting on, because if we don't prove what is on the table to move forward, it's not gonna move forward, simple as that. So, the people, including Mr. Arnold, and I saw Ms. Kimlin come in, Kimlin, uh, come in, I got an email, I think it was Friday, that the second part of training is happening October seventeenth, or you can choose the thirty-first, and this time, it is not virtual, it isn't, it isn't, happy on a webinar, take test and all that kind of stuff. So, now we have to sign up for that, and that is free. That two thousand dollar grant that they gave us, not only us, they gave it to all the counties and municipalities, minus six of them, everybody's not accounted, and I have a, a, like, a husky, like Edington, like Hurtford County, and what, Hurtford the city. So, the training is being paid for, that's how serious this is, the state is giving us grants, and I say us, I'm talking about all the counties, to pay for training, they're offering this assessment opportunity for this grant, so that we don't have to pay eight point nine million dollars. To replace the meters that we're talking about, is between two and three million dollars, if we can get the grant in this application, that would be paid for. Grants are important, many of them come without a match, but yes, Mr. Duke was, uh, right, you have to sustain it. All grants run out, I don't care whether a grant is, is state a grant or a federal grant, you gotta sustain what they give you, they have a criteria, the criteria for these grants was training. So, if we don't get the grant, or all the grant, we have another opportunity in the spring to apply again. Many of the counties that were there, when we were all seated at the funding summit, they had been there before, and they didn't get all the money they needed to do what they needed to do, because they were there trying to figure out how to, how to, you know, increase their scores on the grant. So, if we don't get all the money we need, they've got it broken down, of what we need to s- to keep it going until we can circle back around, I call it, in March, and apply for other, then another grant. To tell you how, to show you how important grants are, I got a call today from Barry Williams, the superintendent, he didn't get all the money he put in for new base grant to fix the schools, he put in for fifteen million dollars, he didn't get it, he got part of it, but he applied again, the board commissioner signed off on it, I signed off on it a month ago, he called me so happy because he got nine million dollars today. So, give him a hand, please. That's gonna fix all the schools, that's gonna help Gates County High School to look like a brand-new school, like Central Middle School, and there's no match from the county, there's no match, so grants work. I got another call today, email today, about opiate settlement, we got the first payment in August, we got another payment today, Ms. Kimlin, uh, Outland sent me an email, we got forty-one thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars and eighteen cents to fight opiate addiction. No match. So, as we sit here as commissioners, we try to get every dime we can, so we don't have to try to figure out how to pay for things that we don't have and have to have, and we try to look for grants that don't have to, need match. In a small county, yes, we're small, we're one of the smallest and one of the poorest counties in this region. I'm just saying. So, as we sit here as commissioners, between a rock and a hard place, when we sit in the middle of a, I'm just gonna say it, a middle of a mess that we inherited, that's your water, and when I first sit here two years ago, all I heard was, water, 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 and out meters, 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 and broadband, 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 and housing, house, nobody ever said anything about such and eight housing from this board. I'm asking you to be patient with Mr. Arnold and his team, as they work on this infrastructure, as they work on billing, and work with you, but we've got to get this right. The last thing you want is to end up being owned by the state, that's the last thing you want. So, they're trying to help us help ourselves, and we're doing the best we can with what we have, and what, I'm gonna close this desk, then we'll move on to the next agenda.
Well.
But I, I said something that, about two months ago, three months ago, about this grant before we even started writing, and I heard all this pushback, 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 and I said that we were gonna get that grant in by September the thirtieth, it's due next week, the eighty percent there, it's the strongest grant that they can write for us because we cannot find things. We can't, we can't make it up, it has to be a true grant, so we're struggling to get a grant in, Mr. Tarp and his company, his engineering company, is doing the best they can, and we're helping them the best we can, it did not start last year, it did not start two years ago, it's not deferred maintenance, it's a lack of maintenance, and we're doing the best we can, and I just hope that we can get this thing in, and that we can get part of the money on the first go-round, so we can keep moving forward, and circle back around in the spring, and try to get the rest of it. We work better together than we do separately, if we focus on what matters most. And I know that that's not popular, and I know you don't wanna hear it, but we got a plan, the plan is working with water and wastewater, and it includes that team we put together, Mr. Mr. Arnold is the, is the project manager, or he is, uh, he signs off on things, he keeps the county manager in the loop, he's the overall project manager doing this project. It's bigger than anybody in this room, and who knew? Most of what's wrong is underground, comes out your pipe, but most of what's wrong is underground or in those tanks, and we're gonna stay on the distressed unit list until we get it fixed, and we'll hopefully get off the moratorium for our wastewater sometime for October, if we can get things moving.
Soon as we can get the assessment done and get it fixed.
Assessment done, mhm. So, we're hoping to get that letter saying we're off wastewater moratorium, hopefully, and, but we're gonna stay on distressed until we get this thing right, and so we're gonna have to, to motor it on, Mr. Cradock, then we're gonna have to move on.
Yeah, I have one more question, just, have we able, I'm sorry, have we been able to get anywhere on the verbiage on the water bill?
On the what?
The verbiage correction.
Verbiage.
I, I.
Backside.
The backside.
Oh, the back.
We, we suspended a penalty or anything related with a penalty, I was just wondering if we had gotten anywhere on the verbiage part of it.
I've rewritten the bill, draft of that has been sent to the company and approved, and will be put into production soon.
Thank you.
So, the back of your bill will be clarified, as I think, um, Commissioner Cradock had that motion in there twelve months ago.
I'd like, I'd like to add one thing.
Go ahead.
You mentioned it, but I, I wanna draw attention to it. The, there used to be a class, what, what is now distressed, used to be called failing system.
Mhm.
And the state revamped that, and they have like a scoring thing, you know, is this good, is this good, is this bad? And in that scoring is where it used to be a failing system, they did away with that, but now the title is distressed, but I, I just wanted to say again that there are ninety-six water systems in the state of North Carolina that are classified as distressed, ninety, ninety-six.
Ninety-six of them.
Not alone, and it does not mean that your water is bad.
No.
It just means that you're at this score, and the state says, to get off of this list, you may have four things, six things, or seven things that you need to correct, and you come off of the list, so.
Can I say one thing? And we have to make sure our water becomes, um, uh, what, that we can make sure that the water is being paid for, that we have a sustainable system, that the people who are using it cover the cost of what it costs to produce the water. Water is not free, that water that we are sending down those pipes are treat, is treated water, and when it goes out in these leaks, we are missing that revenue, and so, we have to have a system that is sustainable. When we put in the water system forty years ago, remember we had the enterprise fund, and the money was supposed to be going into that to, for future repair work and all, we've got to make sure this is sustainable, and that's why small systems are really having a hard time, because we, with the number of customers you have, you've got to make sure that it's being run, uh, efficiently, and at all times.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Arnold, for what you're doing, what you're gonna do, because you have a long road ahead, this project is gonna be years, you're not gonna see a lot of improvement all at once, and what most of the work is done is underground, that you don't see it, you see it in your water when you turn your, your tap on, but most of the work is hard work, it's underground, it's in those tanks, we've got to get that fixed, we got to get these meters replaced, so that we don't continue to overcharge or undercharge of whatever, so that's what we're working on, there's a plan in place, you gotta work that plan, 'cause we can't go back to where it was twenty years ago, we can't go back to where it was ten years ago, we have got to move forward, like all the other ninety-five that Mr. Orange just said. I thank you again and your team, we appreciate all you do, okay? We'll see him again at the next meeting, he's gonna get used to it, he gonna be a star. The next item is very briefly the broadband grant, we did receive three point six million dollars with that grant, we have an ISP assigned to us, all the counties, uh, in, in the state, the great grant is over, and you got your ISP, I'm waiting for the, uh, the contract to come to the county manager and to me, I have not received it, we are going to be serviced for unserved areas by Brightspeed. Brightspeed used to be CenturyLink, I heard all the boos already, it used to, it used to be Century, but Brightspeed brought out CenturyLink, and Steve Brewer is the CEO, he was the same CEO they had in CenturyLink. We are waiting for the, not only for the local grant to come to us, where we can take a look at it, we're also waiting for the state to send us the contract that covers that, we wanna see what that looks like. We need a standing committee, uh, for oversight, there will be two new committees, one's gonna be on broadband. This morning, I had a conversation with a, with a fella in this audience that used to work with CenturyLink, I called him up, because we need a technical person that used to work for CenturyLink, because they're coming, even though they're called Brightspeed, so we need, not only a committee, but we need somebody on that committee that knows technical jargon, that can oversee those maps, we're gonna get new maps from the FCC in October, we're gonna look at the maps that Brightspeed brings us to the county. Y'all all know who I'm talking about, stand up, Mr. Bright, give him a hand, clap for him. One of y'all, he used to work for Century, he's retired, but when I talked with him back months ago, he informed me, just before we even got the grant, so I took it upon myself to call him and ask him, would he please help the county? And others are gonna be asked to help the county on this, on this, um, um, standing committee, we need somebody from first responders, the schools, healthcare, DSS, Mr. Smith, we're just gonna have a broad-based committee that's gonna oversee what's going on with this money we are getting. We're also gonna look for a grant, it's already out, it's probably come out in two or three weeks, I don't know, for you, for people that currently are having problems with their broadband, there's money for that too, because we know that whatever they lay down your road, or whatever, whatever they did with it, you're not, you're dropping calls every day, walking through the house, you can't even hear yourself talk, so, it's a progress, progressive project that we're doing with broadband, so we're pleased with that money. The other standing committee, while I have the floor, so we can move on, it's the opiate, the forty, rounded up, the forty-two thousand dollars, we need a committee for that, because we need, they have stipulations, how you can spend that money, they have best practices, I have folders with everything we need, I don't, I haven't, um, considered... They have best practices. I have folders with everything we need. I haven't considered the person to lead that. And then what you're going to see? You're going to announce that you can apply, like, you know, all committees, you fill it out to sit on either the broadband committee or the opiate committee. I talked to Trillion. Mr. Bland Baker. He shared with me, or I shared with him, that we have a resource. He's asked me to say it tonight. We have a service for mental health services in Gates County. It's on Gates Road. The old First Citizen Bank, I think it was First Citizen. That's where the services are.
Gates Bank Road.
Gates Banks Road. So he gave me the number that you can call. He told me to announce it. It's on their website, the Trillion website. But it's 252-332-8700. You call that one number and either you're in the Husky area or they refer you or get the message to the Gates area. So it's called the Hobart Counseling Services. Go to their website, Trillion website, and you can see if someone needs that resource in the county for mental health services. The doctor name is Tawana Queen Melendez. And so go to the website and you'll see those. So I've done my due diligence with Trillion.
Could we have that also on our website?
We can put it on the website.
So that they can see. Because this is something that's here in the county. You don't have to go to Western City, Eaton. You can have it right here.
Okay. New business. Mr. Curry. While he's getting set up. Ms. Klatia Riddick is not present in the audience, but she's trying to do a Zoom. We don't know if it's going to work or not. But the board chair is here, Mr. James Ure. And so we're going to try to get that up and running. If not, he's prepared to to talk about the election update. He come with all his materials.
Good evening, Commissioners. Attorney Godwin.
Wilson. There she is.
Commissioner Wilson. While he's trying to get Tia pulled up, I do have some handouts. I would like for everybody to get a copy of just new ballot styles that we have. Try to get a copy of it before you leave. It looked like we have her.
Throw the microphone down to you.
Excuse me?
Talk in the microphone.
Okay.
Let's see if Mr. Curry can get her voice.
I'm here.
And her PowerPoint.
Tia, can you hear me?
I can hear everyone. Can you guys hear me?
You can't hear her.
Okay, where you live?
Unmuted. Are you muted?
No, I'm not.
He said no, she's not muted. Okay. We're going I'm waiting on you, Mr. Curry. Let me try this one more time. How about y'all just take a five-minute break while he works on this, okay? I know you've been sitting for a long time, so you want to stretch?
Get one of those handouts. I want to hear you. I'm sorry.
Can you hear me okay? Yeah, I think we can hear you now. Just say sound test. Just go ahead and say it out loud. Yeah, we're going to go back to the room. I think we can hear you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, we can hear you. We're going to go ahead and try it now. Say sound test one more time, please. Okay, yeah, that's fine. I think we can hear you now. Thank you.
That is a New York map.
That's a play period.
All right, we're ready to resume the meeting, please.
Time to get your shoes on. Time to come back in.
Okay, we're going to resume. The others can come back in once they finish their break quietly. Mr. Curry, are we ready?
Yes, I think we're ready. Mrs. Klatia, can you hear me okay? Did you turn something off? Okay, that's fine. I think we can hear you now. Thank you.
Yes, we're ready. Can you hear me? All right.
I'm going to start sharing my screen. Thank you guys. I put a presentation out there for the collective. I'm going to share my screen now.
Here we are.
Can you guys hear my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. So here's your election update for the 2022 election. Here you have the board members and the staff. Heard you guys are going to face this board of elections as well as who I am. Mr. Jimmy Lee is heading the board today. Emily Cross. Call it no regard. Thanks dear. These are the people who remember the last day to register to vote for election. If you are not in your own home on election day, this is the decision to make on record. Early voting begins October 40th. At the last day to place an absentee vote, I made on Tuesday, November 1st. And early voting goes in person and Saturday, the day of the 5th. Election day is Tuesday, November 8th. No sound off until 6:30 AM through 7:00 PM. I'm going to start with absentee voting. A lot of people don't understand absentee voting process. If not, if you can call and say that you're just going to be about. There is a process where a voter has to submit an absentee vote. That form is completed. It is processed at the board of elections office. We mail the voter ballot. They complete their ballot and send it back to our office to be held until December 8th of election day. Again, the absentee vote by mail is Tuesday, November 1st. Absentee in person as well as one stop. For those that remember, we're going to go through this letter. We're going to be back at the election this year. Thursday, October 40th, and November 5th. It will be delivered every day after 11:00 AM. Monday, November 40th, 8:00 AM, every second from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM. These are some people who know candidate ballots deadlines mail. Wherein the voters knows the deadline, voters know what to expect, what to expect on the ballot they mail. We do use, there has been a mass mail-in vote. The Voter Participation Center and the Center of Information are two FAB groups that are out to try to show people where to vote and make sure they vote by mail. If you receive a letter that looks like this, it's a riot. This is not for us. However, you have the action that is closed with the letter. It's invalid at the age. So if you want to vote by mail, if you want to vote, you can complete that form and send it to our office. Again, this is not confirmed. We don't know how it's third-party information. So we understand it wasn't listed. Sometimes it could confuse the voters, but I want to be clear to let you know we doesn't compromise. And that you can build a form out if you choose. If you question your registration and you didn't want to, just call the office. They will verify. This is what the absentee request form about mail looks like. All these papers is very important. What you have to do in all the ballot got to make sure. But in order for us to validate who needs to vote, we will use some type of identity page. So you can either have a driver's license number or the last of your subscription. Make sure it is signed. You can request a valid ballot address relative.
Mother.
In-law. Stepchild. Cousins are not clowned as relatives. And I love young women. But grandparents, grandparents, cousins, cousins, neighbors, neighbors, ghosts, ghosts, cats, cats, or kittens, as you know. But we can request the ballot for that without you. List of candidates. A lot of people, people, a lot of times, say, what you have to do. All I can give you is a sample sound. I don't know what the candidate stands for. You don't know their party. You don't know what their papers smell. All we can give you is their name. So as well sample sound, this is what your ballot can look like. What the name you knew was, are those that were eligible for a vote. Those candidates are US Senator Michelle Lewis and Board Commissioner Nick Heston. This is the same thing for a lot of us who think it's easy to fill out. Well, when you have a right to feel that there are some important things that you do need to know when you fill your ballot out. These are the same instructions that all affect the top of the ballot. However, because we have a company of candidates in our district, I want to make it very clear that when you go to vote and you start filling out that ballot, if you do not stay in that oval, the machine cannot end up on what you want. So it says in our files, you may write any candidate by putting the name and writing the name on the right wing line. So I do exactly here. So you can kind of see exactly what you what you did for in writing. So there is a vote to look up to with the North Carolina State Board of Elections. Somebody, you can always go down and check the information. Or tell you whether you're registered hot or you're status of the registration. It'll tell you where you vote on that one way or your separate ballot. If you are not in the access, you can always call the board of elections office. And I know there is 223778. If I drive by a phone place on my way to work and I just vote there, no, you cannot. You must go to your local place where it's election day. That's one of the reasons why One Stop is going to be pretty ultra-long term. There's people that do vote and have to commute in and out. That such a location is going to be there for two minutes. From the 22nd. Anytime after that, you can go to your local state which I know the county is mostly fine station. With the exception of those who vote in the district of Gatesville. This year, you should be going to Gatesville, Illinois. Next question. The polls at every polling place will mark an area where you can campaign at this point and vote locally. That is only within from the doors. At the community center, yes, I have a line that we will have or some spray paint drawn from the concrete because that footmark is with this concrete. Where candidate and county. Any ballot that there is working on report to us. Why my name and address has been entered as a way for the press roll. Just make sure you kind of see the office are invited to be that direction, lady. If you have to finalize that you're going to vote in for your election day, there are forms on the site that you can write. Absent or absentee ballots, ballots only in one election that's the tie of the result. No. All ballots are counted in the official election result. Election night results are always unofficial. Camden has to officialize it. What do I do if they cannot find me on the registration business? I'm sure I am correct. A lot of times people are very strictly arrest. A lot of times people have not registered or have not voted in a long time. While purging for this, when those who have not voted in a day after you've been in the head after that. So if you are guaranteed that you are registered, you're going to show that you have voted in consistency and there's not a behind you. That's what's official called the election office. Or you can even get there the third edition, third information. Their relative has passed the day of release. After that, you have to go to the wall. You have to be on your way to the top of the table. You have to have confirmation. House, brothers, sister, parent, grandparent, child, mother, law, mother, law, daughter, law, step, law, step, child. House brothers, sister parent, great parent child, mother law, mother law, daughter law, step law, step child, or illegal bar. You cannot come tell us a cousin passed. We need documentation from the post ballot member. If not, they will stay on the road until they are first off, to be removed. If for any reason, I'm told I cannot vote, and I believe I wish to properly look like it. We turn no votes away. Everyone is afraid of the opportunity to vote. If they cannot find you on the road, you will be offered a provisional ballot. No person is denied. If they do not offer you provisional ballot, make sure before leaving that precinct. You have to actually contact the Board of Elections Office, or you contact them regarding your situation. What is a provisional vote? It's one sphere, and place their weapons, but that's not a key on the list. Provisional votes have to be reviewed by the board before they are included in the official result. How do election officials permit a one vote to one? We take several steps to make sure. Voters who have field, who have been able to receive a ballot. We make sure we double check anybody who's gotten a ballot, you mail, their name is already noted. If they already, it's one and second, we block them as voters. Or we go through a proper process, if they should hear a switch, we change them. Only twice, if both easily, frequently work. And best way, the law has made it where this type of activity is punished with a felony or time in jail with large penalty. Okay? But I don't bother with my voter record being heard, that's what I said. After two federal elections, your status will be like, in that, it's that. If your status is in that, if you're in the four federal elections, the system will move. So, after knowing all of this, knowing this half the ballot, you may ask, "I hope." So glad you asked. Everyone plays a part, the Board of Elections, the Commissioners, all of those boards, and the Gatesville, of all these town presidents. The Board of Elections will implement the election laws from the state level to the county level. We register votes, and we provide avenues of votes to exercise their right to vote. Board of Commissioners, funding, General Statute 163, that's 37 states, that the duty of the county, the county. Are checking appropriate real estate, adult leases, the legal functions of the county workers. Including recent, uh, I should say, y'all remember that. Law and lawlessness, we can do exactly what they're entitled, it's called, incorporate security. Not security, and they said, "That's a polling place, the man." No, they just definitely have to, you're saying, let us know, and why not? Say, "I'm just gonna check for you guys." Yeah, sure, the article agreed, that at the end of the night, we will be coming from, to make sure that we're over far. Um, and to make sure we all be safe in this place. The county members, um, may not move to work as a poll. But what we all need to do is register votes and vote. You can be a poll, and then you can encourage others. You can help when we all do. This flyer is what the U.S. today, when they're selling ballots, when the ballot back, it expresses. If you not voting, voting on election day, you will go to one of the 36. Cause there are 36.
Mr. Yur, would this be provided before we can put it on the website?
Yes.
Okay. We will put this on this presentation on the website. The Commissioners invited, uh, Ms. Riddick and Mr. Uh, you would come to give an overview of our upcoming election. So if you could not see, could not hear, you will see that on the website. And he has the handouts for the audience that's here.
Yes, some sample ballots.
Sample ballots?
And this other information about some key dates.
Key dates.
And where all six precinct locations are. The only change is the, uh, Gatesville Precinct 1, where school be at the Gatesville Elementary School instead of the, uh, Social Service Building.
Ms., uh, Madam Clerk, you take those and put them, I think there's a, a, a chair back there in the back, you can pick them up as you leave. You have more, and you have, of course, you have more.
I have several, yes.
Okay, that's good, that's good. All right. Well, you wanna put them back there, you go on, but come back to the podium. Thank you. Appreciate it. Is any other board election members here? Would like to stand up and recognize, so we can see who you are? Mr. Uh, Mr. Sears is here. Okay, thank you, Mr. Sears. I know they have a new member, Ms. Borogod. Yeah, Borogod. All right, Dave. Thank you again, Ms. Riddick. Um, now we have. Budget amendment, F 23 dot zero twelve, provide lighting and security at the election building. Um, you have that in your packet, you also have in your packet, turn this. Madam Clerk, you get this to Mr. Yur? You have one? Give me, okay. You have in your packet. A, um, budget amendment for. Thirteen thousand, nine hundred sixty-nine dollars. And in your packet, you have the, it's called SAFE, Security Assessment at First Entry. And it has November 15, 2021. I want to, Ms. Riddick, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Can you do a, a short presentation of your budget amendment in this SAFE, um, presentation that you gave us?
Excuse me, Dr. Riddick, I, I'm sorry to interrupt. Um, it appears that some of the home viewers, we're getting some kind of an echo or feedback, something, for the people who are listening to it at home. We can hear it somewhat okay, but I think it's too bad of a sound for the livestream audience. So we may have to see if we can get Mr. Yur to, to maybe talk some about the, um.
Did you hear that, Ms. Riddick? There's some, some issues with the, um, audio. We have your present, we, we have your presentation in front of us, you can, but you can hear us.
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay. So you're saying it's just a home audience, okay?
Does it have an answer, and you gotta get out, y'all get out with it.
Yes, in and out, but we can hear you. Uh, so, let's try to get this, can't do anything about it. Um, I'm watching my IT person over here. But in your packet, you see the budget, uh, amendment request, and you also have the SAFE, um, assessment. Security Assessment at First Entry. And what I noticed. Let's see, oh, okay, I knew that movie was gonna happen. She's back. Um, okay, we'll try to get through this. If you look on the back of the first page, Commissioners, just, just turn it over. You have the cover page, and just turn it over. And it'll give you a snapshot, just turn it over. No, 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 go back. Look.
Okay, I'll get it. Yeah, I got it.
It's giving you a, um, a synopsis, and most of you, some of you have, you asked for the packet, and you have it. If you don't have it, we can get it to you, if you wanna, uh, ask the clerk for it, you gotta call in or send an email. But what they did, and what I noticed, and others noticed, is that Security Assessment at First Entry, that's the name of the company. Uh, security company did this, uh, specification, and it says. "On behalf of the United States Department of Homeland Security, Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agency. Thank you for your participating in Security Assessment at First Entry." That's the company that you engaged. Second paragraph, "SAFE is designed to assess the current security posture and identify options for facility owners and operators to mitigate against relevant threats. It is not intended to be an in-depth security assessment. SAFE may be the first step toward an effective security program. In the future, it may be appropriate to conduct a more detailed assessment, particularly after additional security measures have been implemented on site." If you go down. "The SAFE process and options for consideration provide an opportunity for the facility to mitigate vulnerabilities and implicate protective measures. The options for consideration are not prescriptive endorsements of specific protective measures to be installed and/or used at the facility. The owner or operator determines for the facility whether the options for consideration provide the desired enhancement in light of the facility's current security posture, anticipated growth, or organization changes, budgetary outlook, et cetera. The option for consideration provide actions that may help improve physical and operational security." And then it have the references. Uh, Ms. Riddick also went back, and you highlighted something, you wanted to, you know, you highlighted some of the, uh, turn, so we can.
I highlighted those, and I put two in the budget, um, January.
Right.
The main that were not.
Right.
Other things, I said, I said, it might be a lot to do. But, but the main relationships of their recommendations, I highlight those, kind of show you guys.
Okay. And you see that in your packet as well, it's almost on the last page, next to the last page, the one, two, three, four. About six categories that she highlighted for us, our attention. We looked at, well, I looked at them, I guess, the rest of the Commissioners too. The concern is, um, that that's a Rosenwall school. Um, people might not know what a Rosenwall school is, but it's a Rosenwall building, it's a Rosenwall ski, school. And that building is on the historic registry, so anything you do to that building has to be assessed before you do that. It's just like this historic building we're sitting in, the courthouse, it's on a registry. So as I look at the request, it's got a lot of, um, requests that may take away from the integrity of being on that registry without prior inspection by it, by Mr., I think his name is Mr. Reed.
Reed Thomas.
Reed Thomas.
What gives you a beginning?
He would give, give a beginning for whatever additions or security you need in, in that building. And. You're asking for, we understand it, and I do, inadequate lighting outside that can be addressed. Um, it does not speak to, this, this assessment, does not speak to these site-specific, being a proposal that is more site-specific as a Rosenwall school. What am I saying? It's a Rosenwall school, and any additions to that building has to be approved or should be inspected by Mr. Reed. It's just like this building. You don't come in here and put in things in this building, it takes away from the integrity of that Rosenwall school. So, that's what I took away from looking at this in an email that was sent, uh, concerning, I think all the Commissioners got the email, uh, what, two weeks ago, or something like that? And you read the email about the Rosenwall school. And it states. "The Reeves Grove Rosenwall School Building is on the National Registry for Historic Sites. Based on Ms. Riddick's initial lighting request, I contacted Reed Thomas, North Carolina Percivationist. Per Mr. Thomas, the type of outside lighting selected could impact the historic nature of the building, and certain types of lighting are better suited for historic buildings than others." The second paragraph. "Upon further review of Ms. Riddick's request to the Board, I see that she is also requesting effective access control to be established through the integrated use of guards, locks, credentials, and/or screening equipment. Recommendations are installation of cameras, video equipment, door window motion, proximity sensors, and panic buttons. In addition, a recommendation is being made to install a locked door that separates the foyer from across the interior of the facility, and buzzers to allow people to enter in and out. The above security recommendations also impede upon the historic integrity of the building, especially from adding video equipment, monitoring hubs, et cetera." And also, that is, Gates County was just recently approved to be on the African American Tourist Trail, and Reeves Grove Rosenwall School is one of the tourism attractions on the trails. And plans are, are to promote it as a tourist attraction. So, this was sent by Ms. River Green Holly. Ms. Holly is currently working on the Rosenwall School in Corpeet. And she has history with the Reed, uh, Rosenwall School. I think she presented some pictures with us, what, a couple, two, three months ago, she bought the pictures, and they hung them in that Rosenwall School. So Mr. Yur and Ms. Riddick, um. I'm just gonna say this, you, you, you need to get, get the proposal, get to this, uh, Mr. Reed.
Reed Thomas.
Reed, Mr. Reed, I want to, Mr. Reed.
And I mean, he's a North Carolina person, but, well, on the National Historic Register, but he could tell us also where to go for, up the ladder.
Like he's associated with it.
Yes, he's associated, but he's with North Carolina, state of North Carolina.
Is he the same boy that you, that, um, the, 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 right now?
Well, he was cons, uh, consultant.
So he gave you the recognition for the period of that building as well?
I'm not familiar with all the ins and outs of the building. Believe it or not. Um, Pitt, do you remember?
What was the question?
That's the historical. It was metal doors at the back of the building anyway. Uh, they had the original doors at the, uh, on that WPA part. They were, cause it was the jail and all that part.
But that building makes. Correct.
Correct.
Um, I know, you know, Reeves Grove, I have reached out to Ms. Holly, and I haven't, I haven't responded. Prior to paying my first year, I get it out there. Um, and I couldn't show you, cause I don't want it to look like, like, asking for, thing. Thousand dollars, I was here. I approved budgets, but I had 10. I was sold that I would not get that, so that's why I put in the full amount for this right thing. I understand that the Rosenwall School, the sheriff was with them, plus all this assessment, sales, lunch, management, staff. And he, they all understood what he was saying as far as the figure of that building. That is a building that houses election wear, election machines, and is housed by individuals daily, one person. My department is the only department that has, has the one full-time person in the county. And as a female, I would think that it would be fair enough to provide some type of security in a building that is not open to rest, or, or, and almost on outskirts of town, because we're right up the street. So I think the budget made an error for the 13, after I was told that what, that putting my budget was in the history of error. I'm not really asking 13 towns, I only, only 12, according to what I've ever been able to budget. Now, I would be glad to talk with Ms. Green, whoever the historical society is, but I really find it hard to believe that they would deny the security of a building, especially where it holds special tedious, uh, information, such as your elections.
Well, that proposal that you put in is not the issue right now, it's a Rosenwall school. And if you are asking for a security system or security equipment that's gonna take away from that historic registry, he needs to be involved in it. And if you, if you feel so threatened, uh, and we cannot do this because of whatever comes out of that proposal from him, then we need to find somewhere more secure for you and your staff that you feel comfortable with. But that's a Rosenwall school. And I can almost guarantee you, that Rosenwall school will not be, the integrity of it will not be approved, because it's a Rosenwall school. And if you don't know what a Rosenwall school is, I suggest, I know you, I know, I'm talking to the, I'm talking to the audience and to whoever's listening. If you don't know what a Rosenwall school, then go to the website, and you can see what the Rosenwall schools are, and why they're on the National Registry. And to, to, uh, take away from the integrity of that building, I don't think it's, to this extent. I don't think it's gonna pass, but it, but we can go, we can, ask Mr. Thomas Reed.
Reed Thomas.
Reed Thomas, I can't get it right, it's not the last name. Reed Thomas to come and look at that bill, but it's a Rosenwall school. And if you can look at with Mr. Uh, Yur, who's the board chair, that's your budget. If you look at that, and you get with, with whoever you need. If you look at that and you get with, with whoever you need to get with and see what we can do to more securely make her feel secure in that building, that's fine. But that's a Rosenwall school, and I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that. Now, I know some people don't think this is important. I know you don't. But it's on the national registry. And it means something to the African-Americans that have these Rosenwall schools and now there's, there are fewer of them left. That's why that one's on the, on the registry. And there's another one coming, uh, they're trying to get in Corpiet, at Zion Tappan Municipal Back of the Church, that building. That's what we're trying to do as a county. That's all I'm saying, Mr. Yur.
So the, the proposal, I guess you were, you were looking to the report where you said you was asking to provide an entry door that separate the foyer. That's not what I asked for when I talked to building grounds when I first asked for that budget. All I asked, cause they suggested that you think you're doing low and keep it locked because you're anybody. I said, no, I cannot do that, cause they wouldn't know my work from all. So I've been keeping the door locked, but they said you need to be able to buzz someone in, because you don't want people to walk in, will be there. The state board of elections have given us the areas that people have started to election offices, with ski masks on, with a phone, demanding that we answer questions. Not saying against, not against the board that, and I said that it might happen, I don't know. But what's gonna happen, if I put this request in, I would say it's a Rosenwall school, and I totally understand that. I value the fact that that's a Rosenwall school. However, you down the security measure without options lets me know that my security, my staff, my building, I put it right here.
Now, Ms. Riddick, that's not what we're saying. I'm looking at what you highlighted here. You said entry control, and you highlighted it. Main entrance vulnerability, main entry doors are not locked or existing locks are ineffective. Options? And then the main entrance to the building also for unrestricted access. Integrated locked door that separates the foyer from access to the interior of the facility, add a video intercom system, add a direct alarm panic button system, and other things like, you know, install lighting fences, gates, and all that.
No, that's not 12,000. It's only for the lighting and a brush-in system, just like the school system. That's all that's for. It's not asking for a new doorway to be lifted in the hallways. It's not asking for none of that. It's just asking for better lighting, because my staff and I, and during early morning in the hall, we have, we have to start with our flashlights on our fur to get to our car, no matter how close we are to the building, because the lighting on that building is so old.
But Ms. Riddick, your budget amendment is of 13,969 dollars.
My budget amendment is technically for 12, because it was already placed in my budget. So should I share my screen that we can go to the slideshow?
I'm looking at the budget amendment that you have.
Can I share my screen?
I think, I think she wanted to go through these.
I'll tell you, if I may. Can I, uh, make a motion to get with Reed Thomas and see what security measures that we could put in place? And then after his recommendations, then we can see what we can do to better secure the facility.
Do I have a second?
I did, I second.
It's been properly moved in second that we get with?
Reed Thomas.
Reed Thomas. Allow him to come down, look at the building, have a conversation with the board chair and the director of elections. Amend this budget amendment, cause we look at budget amendment, that's what's on this budget amendment for 13,969 dollars.
But let's be clear, it was put in my budget for 12.
I hear you, Ms. Riddick.
And that's why we're not, that's what I'm saying, we're not gonna put elections out here like we're asking for 14,000 dollars. It was in my budget that I had 12.
Do I have a second?
Yes, I, I second second. Uh, in the discussion, I wonder if we could also add in there, Madam Chairman, that, that the board would stand and then within the motion for security, the integrity, and the safety of that building.
That's what I'm saying.
It could be that, that if the building cannot be touched, but other things could be placed there surrounding, like a different door, Reed Thomas would, would come up with those issues. But that we would suggest that, uh, as a board, or at least we would say that we do need the integrity, the safety, and security of that building.
Absolutely.
Also, EIC is in there too, isn't it?
And, and, you know.
Oh, yeah.
We're dealing with the building.
It's a building.
Yeah, we're dealing with the building now, regardless of who's in there. We're dealing with the building, and we're dealing with security of one of our staff.
Mm-hmm.
And so we have a motion, and I second it. It needs, and as far as the discussion before we vote, it, this needs to be a priority, because it's getting dark earlier. She's gonna be in the office. She, she's gonna be in the office more hours than, than normal. So it needs to be a, needs to be a push item, I believe.
Mr. Yur?
Just to make sure that I, I understand this clearly, so y'all telling me that any upgrade to the integrity of the doors was bringing?
Not the doors, the building. We're looking at the building. They may have approved the doors, we don't know that. That's the issue. The issue is, it's a historic building.
It has to be appropriate.
It has to be appropriate for the building. It could be different doors. We don't know that, because we haven't had Mr. Reed to come.
Okay, so he, he's the key, okay?
Mm-hmm, he's the key.
I got it.
Now, what was the, what was?
Uh, just, I think it needs, as far as dialogue, it needs to be a push item. You can get on it right away.
Okay. What, what was the motion?
Then I'll call the vote, if you agree.
Call for the vote.
The vote was to consult with Reed Thomas.
Yes, right. For security, and then he added.
Mm-hmm. We'll clean it up, but if the motion is to consult with, uh, Reed Thomas before, to consult with Reed Thomas as soon as possible. Let's say within, I don't know, 30, I don't know when we can get in here.
I don't have 30 to hurry.
What'd she say?
For the purpose.
I don't have 30 days, and it's gonna start next month.
You, yours, as soon as, we need to contact him tomorrow.
You're consulting with him for the purpose for the safety, security, and integrity of that building.
Mm-hmm. That's right, she's got it. And that was the motion, that was the second. All in favor? I approve. We get what you, Mr. Yur. The motion and everything, and this, this, um, budget amendment's gonna have to be modified, depending on what we finally, find to do with the building, okay? We are concerned about everybody's safety. A person's safety is more important than a building, but you just can't come into a, um, historic building and just, it takes it off the registry.
I understand.
All right, thank you.
So we, we'll be putting some urgency to this as.
Yes, yes, sir.
Yep.
Mr. Owens, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yur.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Riddick. All right. Where's my gentleman? Next is the DSS Board of Directors. Um, Mr. Owens, you're on that board? I gotta find that.
Yes, ma'am. We, um, I'm on that DSS board, and we have our director here, Willie Smith, who spoke earlier. Our board was unanimous. We, we waited some time, Willie needed to be here some time for us to officially go through his evaluation, and it was not synced with the county's, um, budget timing and everything, the time he came. But we, uh, we made a point, um, to have an evaluation, uh, on him, so he wouldn't miss out on, um, um, cost of living increase properly and things like that. But it was unanimous decision by our board that we bring him up to scale, um, with surrounding areas. And we did our research, um, we consulted county manager, and, and he shared with me that we, we needed to look at like counties, population, workload, and all of that, and the number of personnel across the state to try to come up with that number. Again, it was unanimous decision. Uh, Mr. Smith's doing a fantastic job, and, uh, and we really appreciate him, we want to keep him. And this is just a, a salary increase to bring him up to proper, uh, schedule. And I will, uh, say that in your documentation, you see that we asked it to be effective, I believe, September 1. Is that what the date was?
Mm-hmm. Um, that's gonna have to be modified to effective beginning, the next, the cleanest way to do it is to effective begin in the next pay scale, I mean, pay period, which is October 10th, I believe. You're still gonna get, you know. Is that right, Mr. Wilson?
The, the pay period's on the 10th. I mean, it, it is possible to, to vacate it, um, but yes, it would be.
Well, I'm, I'm here to, to present the document, but.
Okay.
I'm speaking.
I got you.
For that board, okay.
All right. Do I have a motion? You have a letter in your packet from the DSS board, signed by the board chair, Mr. Jonathan Jones.
So moved, I think, yeah. And I'll second the motion.
And profit, moved in second, all in favor?
Uh.
Board consideration of contract for lobbying services, that's also in your packet. You had a presentation last, um, at the special meeting held on, I think it was, uh, September the 5th? No, September, it was 7th. September the 7th. That's in your board packet. You had the presentation, you've looked at the contract that came out to you. You heard the presentation, you have the contract, I think, Mr., uh, not Mr. Commissioner Craddock asked about that, and we finally got the contract and everything. Okay. Do I have a motion on the floor? Or do I have discussion?
Um, the monetary amount, the way, the way it was presented, and I'm not sure, matches the agreement that, that we have here. At some point during the conversation, I thought I heard that there were gonna be, like, two contracts. One with, uh, one gentleman, and one with the other. And, um, here it says 1,500 dollars a month, I believe.
And for the entire contract period?
I thought what I heard was two for one.
That's what I thought I heard.
That was my understanding with the conversation. Also, at this meeting, I, I was expecting a singular contract for both individuals for a two-year term and the amount of 72,000 dollars. And what you have before you is for one of the parties, Mr. Steinberg, and if you do look at the monthly rate, and if you did that by 24 months, that does work out to exactly half of it, then it's, it'd be 36,000. So, but this is just a singular contract, uh, for, I mean, Mr. Steinberg. And since it doesn't start, cause he cannot start effective January 1st, or at least he could start with February. That's why it's not a full two-year. But if it was January 1, it would be the 36,000. And then with the other gentleman, another 30, it would have been the 72.
Commissioner Freeman, I, I do recall the two-for-one comment, uh, that you made. But the, the other gentleman, Mr. Stansel's name was not mentioned in here. That's what I was a little bit alarmed about. Now, maybe, maybe the 1,500 dollars is the two-for-one, and because, um, Mr. Steinberg actually is gonna own Wolfstein, I guess the other guy's like a subcontractor for him, and maybe that's why he's not listed in here. But I was surprised that his name wasn't in here.
No, his name's not in here.
And I was, and I was kinda reading that, uh, a little backwards from that, is that Stansel was actually the one in charge, and Steinberg came on with him. That's the way I understood their presentation.
Right.
I did likewise.
So Steinberg can start till January 1st, because he's got to finish out his term.
February, you can't.
He's resigned, and he has a, that six-month waiting period.
Yep, six months.
And that he would be here most of the time, and that Mr. Stansel would be at.
Correct.
In Raleigh.
So we in agreement that, that we're looking at an agreement that, with a price tag of 36,000 for two years?
This would, it, it wouldn't be a full 36, uh, it'd be 36 plus, uh, 1,500, because this is actually 23 months in duration, because it, it begins on February 1.
Okay.
Just one other observation that I had here, I'll put it, uh, for the board's consideration, and, you know, it does obviously specify that, uh, this individual will be providing lobbying services for the county. I, I think it would be good if the contract also, you know, you don't necessarily have, um, what you may call deliverables in the contract, but maybe something that would identify how often or how frequent will he meet with this board? What type of reporting of lobbying activities will he submit to this board? Even if it's something just twice a year, once a year, but, you know, it, it doesn't provide any provisions for, uh, the providing of any, uh, either written.
I agree, extremely vague.
Reporting to the board on, on his activities, or I would, I would hope that there would be face-to-face meetings, uh, to where the board could express its needs and desires, and the lobbyists could.
Yeah, I find this, I find this document would be extremely vague, too vague for me to, to.
Pretty bare bone.
Uh, yeah, it is very vague. There is no report back to, uh, schedule. Of course, I know the gentleman's son, right there, he's very busy.
No, we should table this.
Do I have a motion?
I think, uh, Mr. Craddock is.
I'll make a motion, we table it.
But, wait a minute, which one now?
This is my thoughts.
Doesn't make a motion.
May?
Motion?
No, I'm, I'm not making a motion, this, this is my discussion part of it, I guess. We have House of Representatives, we have people that represent us, we might have to stay on them. But I can stay on them a lot for 36,000 dollars. That's how I feel about it.
I think Commissioner Freeman comments about the vagueness, a little clarity, and county manager's, um, comments sort of dictate that maybe we, um, county manager, maybe our attorney have a con, a conference with them, asking for a little more clarity, and, and maybe even, um, a schedule for updates or contacts or whatever.
Okay.
Maybe for our purpose of the resolution, that we just, that we make a motion to table it?
Sounds good.
Is that a motion?
Yes, ma'am. I'll make that motion.
Second?
Hold hardly. Second?
All in favor?
Uh.
Pouse? Okay, so move?
Um, that's, just for the sake of clarity, Madam Chair, if I understand that the matter's tabled, do, do you wish for myself and/or the county attorney to discuss with them some of the discussion that we had here this evening?
Yes.
If you're in favor.
Okay. Just wanna make sure.
Next is the asset inventory and assessment grant application, local match county manager, Timothy Wilson.
Uh, as you know, you've already heard about the application that we are gonna be submitting by, by the end of this month. Green Engineering's been putting in quite a bit of work on that. Unfortunately, some of the, the needs that our water and wastewater systems have, you know, aren't necessarily priorities of the particular grant program. In, in other, in other words, they score a little low, because, you know, they don't, they don't mix well. The, the consultant, as I know, it was originally proposed to the board that there would be no local match or local dollars put into this. This would be 100% ARP money. The consultant believes it to be important, the engineering firm, uh, in order to try to bolster the application's competitiveness, to, to put some local dollars into this application. And he has recommended, uh, 250,000 dollars, uh, as local match. Now, this money, since it is for the water in the sewer, this would not come from the property taxes, this would come from the fund balance of the, the utility system, is where those funds would be. But nonetheless, as I explained to the engineering firm, I said, these are local dollars, and I did not want to see any application moving forward, uh, that had any type of commitment or obligation of those funds without this board's knowledge and consent. So I'm here tonight just to see what, what's the board's pleasure on.
So what would we be eligible for if we don't? So what would we be eligible for if we don't match $250,000? None of it, or just certain?
Well, it, it'll simply, he's hoping that it will garner us more points, because we have put local money in. Um, I don't know, you know, how, if it will make a difference in the final analysis. Uh, it's not going to be a large amount of points, but he believes, you know, every, everything that we can do. He actually talked about a larger figure, and I was comfortable with that. And I got it down to this figure, uh, put towards the board for consideration.
Talking to Mike, Mr., when you talk, talking to Mike, Commissioner.
I was a bad habit facing the people. So.
Going to some of the meetings that I've gone to, um, you know, there's scoring five points here, five points there. And when you have some earnest money that the county has put down, it gives us, that's looked favorably upon, I would say. You know, you have skin in the game. And we're looking at, isn't it 14 million?
Looking at nine right now.
What, nine, nine million? And it does come, remember, we do have the enterprise fund for water and sewer.
We're not scoring well, if you remember what I said, we're not scoring well because of lack of, um, some type of documentation and things like that. So when you're not going to score well, you put money in, hopefully, we're not saying we're going to get it. But it looks better, because we're saying, this is important to us, and we're going to use our enterprise fund money to put it.
It's not, um, the amount of money, it's, it's not money that we're paying to Green Engineering.
Nope.
Mm-mm.
So without, one way to address it is, without, without the grant, the situation is fix your own water system. And if it costs $4 million, then you're looking at a $4 million bill. And the state says, uh, to Gates County and to the other 95 facilities, you are coming off of the distress list or else. So let's say it's a $4 million fix. We need to get the $4 million through the grant. Uh, and we, because if not, we would be spending far more than the $250,000. Uh, I do recall that when, when the gentleman from Green Engineering was here, we, uh, we asked a question, or either he volunteered, about other grants that, uh, that they had worked on, that had been awarded. And he gave us maybe two or three, off the top of his head. They wrote those grant applications. Now, I don't, I don't know that, you know, what those counties or those water sewer systems, I don't know what, what amount they put in. But, uh, you know, upfront money themselves. But, um, I mean, it's the first time we're hearing it, so, and so it's new. But we are facing a deadline for the application on the 30th.
When we started this, we didn't think we had to do a match, but as we closer to, as they assess and, and look at what's, what they can't do or can't find to get those points.
And what the county manager is also saying about the money is that it's money that has been set aside over the years to repair our water system. So, uh, we would be using that money and, uh, for the purpose that it was set aside for.
So it would come from the enterprise fund versus the general fund?
That, that's correct. It's not going to come from the unassigned balance of the general fund. This will come from the, the balance, from the, from the enterprise fund. That's collected through, you know, the, the water piece.
And the money.
Right now, that's, that has a balance, I think, of just a little over 800,000. And that's why I wasn't comfortable with a higher number, because we have a system with a lot of needs, and I didn't want to deplete that balance, uh, to such, at such a degree, because I know we're going to need that for other things.
If we don't get the grant?
We haven't spent the $250,000. We're just saying, if we get, if we get the grant, we're going to spend $250,000 of our own enterprise funds. So we haven't spent the money yet, we're putting it on the application to say.
We're going to match, if we get the grant, we're going to match.
We're doing it to try to, to garner more points, uh, on the application is the whole purpose of this match.
At, at that point, it would just become encumbered, right?
That's right.
Yes.
Do I have a motion?
We're not going to meet again before the 30th.
No, we're not. No, we're not going to meet again before the 30th.
And it's, and the money is, it's an application process, uh, and we have to make the decision. I'll make the motion that we, um, take the recommendation of the firm that we hired to fill out the grant for us, Green Engineering. I'll make the motion that, um, we put $250,000, um, in that slot for upfront money from the county.
And I'll second that motion.
Proffered.
It does come from the enterprise fund.
Mm-hmm.
From the enterprise fund.
Mm-hmm.
Everybody understands, right?
Amen.
It's not from your property taxes, it's from the water.
It's not property tax, coming from enterprise fund.
Which is your water, correct.
We're putting that much towards our water system on top of the grant money, which we're going to have to do anyway. I just want to make sure everybody understands. I'll hold a vote.
I had a motion by.
Jack.
Jack, and second by Freeman. All in favor?
Aye.
I. Okay.
Thank you.
Next, we have Sheriff Campbell. Budget amendment, F-23-11.
Where we at?
I need vehicles. That's what our proposal was for, was vehicles. I've asked for 135,000, asked for three. I got a call today, I got two, two potential hires waiting to come over. Hopefully, I have one spare vehicle. And I'm looking at two deputies coming over. I don't have a car to give them. I have one spare. I know people wondering about our, our cars and our upkeep in our cars. We do everything we can, the oils are changed, tires rotated. We do everything we can to keep these cars on the road as long as we can. But these are patrol vehicles. They are driven hard, they idle along, they are not your family car. They wear out. I cannot protect this county without vehicles. I can't. We have half of our fleet has well over 100,000 miles. The two cars that were damaged, one of the head gasket blown, the other one was rammed in total. So hopefully, the county will get something back on the vehicle that was, because that wasn't our fault. We had an individual that totaled that car. I have talked with the, the Allstate agent, and they're trying to get all the paperwork squared away, so the county is reimbursed for that vehicle. But, um.
Which one was that, the?
The black.
That, that was the black Charger.
The black Charger, okay.
I think.
He got blood this afternoon, it's been totaled. We've got to take the license and stuff.
Okay, the car, we got word this afternoon that that vehicle was totaled, so.
And insurance has been applied for?
Yes, ma'am.
His, his insurance is going to pay the county back for that, for that vehicle.
Okay.
That individual's dad on the note was, was very, very sorry. Uh, as a matter of fact, the car that rammed our vehicle, he's going to present that title to us free and clear. So the car's not worth a lot, but we're going to get something for it. So, but it will belong to us, so that's a little money I back for that, so.
And, and if I may say, I, I haven't heard the sheriff say it, and I don't know that this has been brought up in an open forum, but the sheriff has probably saved pretty close each year, anywhere from 40,000 plus on the health of inmates, and the bills that come from the hospitals and, and, uh, from the doctors. Sheriff has gone over and gone over with the company that he had, was provided. And, uh, and subsequently, they cut that bill, get a hospital bill, say for instance, 20,000. Sheriff gets it cut down to like 7,000. Sheriff may be able to explain that a whole lot better than I. Go ahead, sir.
That, that, uh, that agency is through the North Carolina Sheriff's Association, it's called Prime Health. And our inmate medical bills, man, we got, we got some of these folks that, that literally bust us open on, on medical bills. Prime Health, what we do, when we get the bill, we send the bill to Prime Health, they do a scrub on the bill. And they do, they save us a ton of money on these bills. A lot of them are saving 40, 50, 60% on some of these bills. But, uh, and we, we've had some inmates that cost us, we, I think the last one that was high was, was over six grand. They find out they get free medical, and they take off and go with it. So, but that's a, that's a good program.
It's a big savings. And I know in the past, and, uh, and I'm sure that, uh, that he was housed as an inmate sheriff, while you were sheriff, but he had, if I'm not mistaken, an open heart surgery, or cath?
Yeah, we end up having to stay, uh, it's probably about a week that we stayed around the clock with that individual while he was in the hospital. So that cost the county a tremendous amount of money.
And the bill was somewhere over 20,000 or so, am I correct?
Yeah, I was, I was why I was a deputy, because I, I did stents in the hospital, sitting with that individual. The vehicles, and, and I'd like to try to clarify something, because there's, there's some misunderstanding about it. Last year's budget, if I remember correctly, we had to do an amendment, it was 150-some thousand bucks. That money came out of inmate housing. I didn't have any, any money in the vehicle line item. We done an amendment. The money came out of inmate housing. We bought four vehicles. It was amendment done for, I believe, 153,000 bucks. And I think that's where the money came from, if, if I'm correct on that. I don't remember, I don't remember any, any money in our line item. When I started as sheriff, my vehicle capital ID was 75,000 dollars. Second year I was sheriff, it was cut to 35,000 dollars. And third year, it was 35,000. There was some, a mistake or something made, uh, with another department. And I ended up giving my 35,000 back to the county to help out. And that's, that's the reason I didn't have any money in my vehicle line item. And we ended up taking money out of inmate housing to cover that. So.
All right, well, and that money is, Commissioner, we may remember, that was when, uh, when we had a difficult time where we needed to balance the budget. Because a budget has presented to the state that was not balanced, and we were not made aware of that until after it had already hit Raleigh. And then, uh, we had to balance the budget. The sheriff gave up some money, so other departments did as well, but sheriff gave up a big hunk. So that was the reason.
Probably closer to 40 grand.
It's actually more than that. We were asked to give up 5% from each line item. We, that's what we submitted, and the county manager at that time took an additional 27,000 on top of it, and took our vacancies.
So sheriff, you're telling me you need three new vehicles?
I need three.
All right.
I need three. And even that's going to be, I've got, I've got one spare now that's got around 100,000 mile, that car's in good shape, should run us another, hopefully, you know, another year or two. But I've got two full-time openings. And if I hire, if I'm lucky enough to hire two more deputies, that will still leave me, that will leave me one new spare. So hopefully, three, we can, we can, we can go, I, I would try to go with that.
And of course, you go with, um, the state contracts on these cars, because they're much cheaper than where I can go out and buy one.
That, the four vehicles that we bought, we bought two that were new, uh, two new Explorers. And we bought, and we bought two used. I bought a 2017 Ford Explorer for myself, and only had 29,000 miles on it. So, not a patrol vehicle, but it's, it's fine for, for me.
I know that's, the mileage is high on these cars, but, um, I, and I'm just asking a question.
Ma'am.
Um, I understand that the deputies carry their cars or drive their cars home. Some of these live in Gates County, but some of them do not live in.
That's, that's, that's not just Gates County, this, this county's all surrounded.
So if somebody lived in Carrattuck?
No, never, that would be too far.
Okay, there is a limit?
Plug, yes, ma'am, this is close. And, uh, I have one that's living over in Hurford County now, and a couple over in Eaton, but they can be at the county line in 15, less than 20 minutes. So that's, that's another little perk, being we don't pay them 40, 50, you know, 40, 45,000 dollars like should be paid.
So, but it's a limit to how far I think.
Yes, ma'am.
If you look at the people in the county, Gates County has law enforcement officers from Virginia, Hurford County, Dulles Beach City, Perfumans, and they drive their patrol cars here in Gates County. They park it here.
I just wanted to live over in Perfumans that lives over in North Carolina, I've seen him in the morning, he drives a patrol car.
And that's just, that's just a fact, because if an emergency arises with the shortages in law enforcement, if an emergency arises, these deputies have to respond. And they're not going to be able to do it in a mom and pop's pickup truck and driving up the road, because the first thing that's going to happen is either the county they live in, the law enforcement there, or Highway Patrol's pulling them over. That's the reason why we allow them to take the vehicles, vehicles home.
Have we, um, we heard from the insurance company, Mr. Manager, about the, the, whether the hospital chase?
Yes, ma'am. I, I have been in contact with them twice, and I've had my sergeant actually in contact with me too. But I have spoken with them, and they're saying they're not getting our emails for some reason. But we have been in contact with them.
So that probably will help pay for at least one car.
I don't know what we're going to get with that vehicle, because it is an old vehicle, a high mile vehicle. But we should get something.
Do you have any insight?
The, the car was declared total.
Yes, sir.
Um, the adjuster put the value of the car at 14,261, so that's our $1,000 deductible.
Right.
Full received payment of 13,261 for it. Kristy, she just got that at, at the end of the day.
Yes, sir. She called over to the office, and she talked to my secretary, and that's what she informed us. But I'd heard earlier mention of this $84,000 grant. Yes, we did get a grant from the state last year. But that grant was to supplement the budget that was given to us by the county. You can't supplement zero if there's no money in the bu, vehicle budget. There's no other way. And it's very clear, it says supplement, not subplan.
But it's not restricted, that 84,000?
It is to a certain degree. When, what we've been trying to use that money for, if you haven't been in our office lately, you need to come and visit.
I try to stay out of the insurance office. I'm afraid they'll lock me up.
Our, we got desks that's just falling apart, we're putting screws in them to keep them together. Every time the captain gets up out of his chair, he's got a white flex off of his uniform, because the leather on the armchairs is coming up. We have paint failing everywhere. We're trying to use money to make our office look presentable. When we had the Chief Justice of the North Carolina Supreme Court here, it was embarrassing for him to come through and see stuff all over the floor, because we had no storage space to put it. And it was really embarrassing when his wife stood then, out of the rain and almost failing, broke her neck, because there was a hole in the rug in, in the hallway. I'll give Crystal Boone credit, soon as we made her aware of it, she bought a new one for us. I mean, that's the problem that we're trying to face. We've been fighting desperately ever since we've taken over. But it seems like we had, we actually got money one year to pay. Crystal Boone, buildings and grounds told us they had money. But then the fiasco where we had to give up money, they took the money from Crystal and used it to balance the budget.
And $84,000, I know a lot of people got a lot of questions about that. That, that is to be used at my discretion, and that is going to be used for specialized equipment. Somebody made a comment about high-powered rifles. You best believe we got high-powered rifles. If you go to some of the houses that we go to on domestic violence protect orders, and see the weaponry that we take out of houses, it will scare you to death. I stood out behind my patrol car about three weeks ago, 1:00 in the morning. Military-trained guy, and I'm standing out there with a shotgun with no. guy, and I'm standing out there with a shotgun with no optics on it, and he can take me out from 300 freaking yards away. I'm standing out there with a shotgun. You best believe I'm gonna buy high-powered rifles. What I'm gonna do right now with all the rifles and shotguns that I got, I'm gonna put good quality optics on them so I can see them at night. Because I've been in a situation, I've looked down the barrel of the shotgun at a man's head at 15 yards, and I couldn't see the end of the sight. And that sheriff right back there was the one I was covering. You best believe I'm gonna buy good equipment for us. I don't want to go to a house and be out gunning. That's not what I'm in, in the business for. Not.
Well, I don't think we are, we are not arguing that point.
No, ma'am.
But that's what I'm gonna use that money for. That's what it's for.
But when you see, hear false information, they bought a $7,000 high-powered rifle to kill antelopes. Well, the gun did cost $5,000 and the scope did cost $2,000. But because of our relationship with Pat Bravel at Bravel, they sold it to us for $2,600. That's less than half of what the gun was worth.
All right. Madam Chair, I think we've talked enough.
Thank you.
We know what we, we need, we know what we need to do. So I'd like to put a motion to approve this 135,000 dollars for the sheriff's department to buy three brand-new vehicles.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion on the floor. We have a second. Any more discussion?
Neither. A des, a designation of where the funds are, are, are to come. Simply going to be general fund or do you have any other ideas? You do have the opioid money that you just received.
I want, I want to say the general fund for now, and if Ms. Kim can work something out, then we.
Where is, is Kim here?
She's, she's gone.
Oh.
If, if she can pull money from other, I, I don't.
Because I was just looking at, I think you reported there's 41,000.
Yeah, but I got.
And then we also have the 13,261 from the, to the auto insurance.
That 41 is gonna be restricted to opiate. You can't.
I don't care where the money come from along with that.
Let me just say that you can, that's why they put restrictions on the opiate money.
Yeah, that's right.
They're not gonna allow us to do that. Um, what else did you say you could come from?
You said 40,000 from out of where?
No, that was the opiate. We can't do that.
That was opiate.
The, the 13,261 would be the, the car insurance, the, the money left over from the car vehicle.
I think we remove it out of general fund and then figure out what to do after you back.
My, I mean, I just need to know where to think about this.
General, well.
Amend your motion?
I'll amend my motion.
Amend the motion.
Take it out of general fund.
Okay. Thank you.
Motion?
Madam Clerk?
You, okay.
Motion to overturn the three vehicles, take the money out of general fund.
Unless, unless the, the finance director, you know, can, we gotta put that in there because maybe other money, it's coming from somewhere.
Less the insurance.
No, I mean.
Less the insurance.
So.
This, this, uh, hell, let's, let's.
In short time. Motions without, motions without.
General, general fund. Leave it at general fund.
Leave it at there?
If we got to pay the general fund back, we'll pay the general fund back.
Yeah. And you know, um, just to make sure people understood, we have been funding, like in 2021, we did four cars, you know?
There was amendment made about us.
Yeah. We saved money from inmate housing.
I understand that, but you know, people have said we don't fund, and we did give those funds.
Well, tit for tat, I'll call it that. But the problem we have also, I've listened to grants, 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 grants. We may not have a doctor in front of us, but this county has something that a lot of sheriff's office don't have. The command staff are all college educated. We're not, we're educated as well, we're not simple country boys that's sitting on a, out in the corn, on a haystack in the cornfield. I wrote grants for the state. That's what I did for the first 10 years working for Department of Corrections. I handled fiscal, I taught state accounting system to the departments. I put in four grants when we first started, never got heard of a word. So I told the Governor's Crime Commission, what's going on with our grant? Found out our DUNES number was invalid. DUNES and Bradstreet has invalidated it because they thought we were closed. So we got a new number and well, we're talking to them. They told me I need to go to the U.S. government, sams.gov basically, and set up an account. I did. Two years I've waited for a response. I finally got a response in December of last year. Uh, December 21st of last year, it says, your role request for Count, Gates County of was rejected. The, this means an administrator and organization reviewed your request and decided it was not acceptable for you to register this entity. So somebody in the county manager's office or somewhere in the county rejected us from writing grants. So we did one even better. First-term sheriffs in the state of North Carolina gets a mentor. Sheriff, North Hapton County Sheriff Jack Smith is his mentor. He, Sheriff Smith mentors our sheriff as well as Sheriff Hayes over in Hurford County. Talked to them. They gave us the name of a grant writer, she's a retired grant writer from Guilford County. For those of you who don't know over in Guilford County, that's Greensboro, one of the largest cities in this area on state. She gets, her for counting $400,000 a year. We pass this information on over to here. Nobody calls her. I get emails from her quite often, Governor's Crime Commission grants up, send the information up, no response from her, nobody contacts her. You are talking grants, but you want to hire a grant writer for the county when we got a woman that is retired, dealt with one of the largest counties in North Carolina, who is willing to work with all the rural counties in this area, and nobody contacts her. That, to me, is unbelievable.
All right, I'll call the vote.
Well, we thank you for the money you all are giving us.
Because we all, we're voting, haven't we?
No.
I've lost.
You seconded it.
Oh, I know, we're a little off topic.
Yeah, okay, you got off topic.
Yeah, we got a little off the subject.
Okay.
Yeah.
We've got the motion, Madam Clerk. Okay.
I might read the motion.
Convention of Craddock and Second Amendment, Convention of Freeman, motion to approve the three vehicles, take out general fund.
For 135, is that the amendments?
Yes.
For 135.
For that to be presented.
All in favor?
Uh.
Got it?
Yes, ma'am.
Stay right there. Stay right there, Sarah.
If I may once, say one thing in, in addition to what the chief said, for this grant writer, that is no charge at all to the county or to the sheriff's office, anything else. That grant writer writes grants for 10% of whatever is gotten. So nothing goes through the, the county government, the finance office. It all is handled right through that grant writer, the way I understand it.
The 10% is administrative cost.
Yes, sir.
It's typical.
That's, that's normal.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Let's move right along, it's getting late. Reverend, I'm here, Reverend. Now we're gonna talk about, or you're gonna present to, wait a minute, give me, uh, the sign-up sheet for the first responders. Just give that to me.
You'll be able to speak first.
I want you to speak first. You, mm-hmm, yeah, you, mm-hmm. It's for 911, they, uh, let me write this, wait a minute. Um, the board, uh, the board for their proposal to assign E-911 dispatch authority to sheriff's office. Okay?
Um, when we talked about this, really, let me back up a little bit. I have considered the 911 dispatch authority to sheriff's office since I took over. They're not really, but they are, and, and we are connected. And I'm, I'm so concerned, uh, with, with losing them, and I don't want to. If, if this, if it's, if I take it over, then I would want to model it just like Chauan County. They have a director. And Sheriff Bassnight doesn't have to worry about it. The director runs the show. If there's something major that comes up, then the sheriff gets involved. But the director runs it. You've got to have a director that actually cares and is dedicated to the community and to the center. They will basically run the center. And I've talked to some of my sheriff friends about what I was thinking about doing, taking the 911 center up. The first thing they said, have you lost your own mind? And I said, no, I care about my county, I care about the 911 center, and I want it to stay in the county. Right now, as, as the dispatch center sits, you got six full-time people there. One of those six is out on medical, so really and truly, as we sit tonight, you got five. Part-time. You've got six, but one of those rarely works, is out a lot, so, and you got another one that's in school, so you got four really that you can count on part-time. From talking with the dispatchers and another 911 director, to run that center like it should be, we need eight full-time dispatchers, and you need six to eight part-timers. At the very least, two full-time dispatchers. Uh, I don't know if you guys realize it or not, but there's still shifts being covered in our 911 center with one dispatcher. This is, this can't happen. It's, it's a major, major safety concern for all first responders. If, if something really big goes down and you got one dispatcher in there, you got fire to deal with, you got EMS to deal with, you got law enforcement to deal with, you might be dealing with a helicopter coming out of somewhere. One person is completely overloaded. It has to be two in that center. Every shift. But there's been multiple, multiple shifts that, and I know maybe they're doing the best they can, but this has got to change. If the center comes underneath me, all the dispatchers will have to be sheriff's standard certified. That means they'll have to go, that's a 40-hour certification class that they will have to go through and pass. Then they're certified. At this time, there's only two dispatchers over there that are sheriff's standard certified. So that means the majority will have to, have to go to class. The lady that teaches this class, Susan Gillis, I think one of the dispatchers has talked to her, it's a good chance she will come here to do that in-house for us. We just basically had to put her up, but she'll do the class here. The dispatchers have one year, once they come underneath the sheriff to get certified. And I think that each dispatcher that, that goes through this and becomes certified under sheriff's standard should be compensated for it. That's a big accomplishment, and there'll, there'll be better dispatchers for it. Taking on another 14 to 16 employees and the responsibilities to go with that, I would see some compensation as well, I mean, anybody would. The sheriff would have had to final say myself in the hiring and determination of 911 dispatches at that point. And I do my very best, just like I did with the sheriff's office. That was quite a challenge when I started. 911 will be, I don't think is bad. But I'm gonna put the right people in the right place to make it the best it's ever been. The dispatchers that will, will be there will be 100% dedicated to their job, to the community they serve, and to me. If not, they will dispatch somewhere else. The only thing that worries me is, you know, the county manager, his future goal was, was to move it. He stated this back in August the 19th, 2021, that he intended to move it out, make it in a separate building to move it. No fire, EMS, or law enforcement wants this 911 center moved. The reason that I'm trying to save it, to keep it where it belongs and keep it in the same building where it's at, is because I care about it. I'll do all I can to keep it here and make it, make it be successful. But it's gotta be funded. You got new positions there, it's got to be hired, and if it is not funded, if it's not supported by you guys, it's gonna fail. And I don't want, and I feel like, and people have come to me, and this is my biggest concern, when I have somebody from fire, when I have somebody from EMS, and I have other people in the community saying, Sheriff, they're gonna set you up and they're gonna pull it right out for money, or they're gonna sit back and watch you fail. Now, I ain't about that. If we're gonna make this work, then we'll make it work together, but don't, don't set me up because that, that, that won't work for any of us. The whole county will lose, you guys will lose, and I'll lose. If we're gonna do this, it's gotta be funded. And that's what I got. I just, if, if we do this, it's gotta be funded and it's gotta be support.
Now I want to hear from, um, the only person signed up was John Kitchell from Core Peak.
We were told originally that only one person per department could speak.
So what now?
We, we were told originally that only one person per department could speak, but if, if you want to hear Mr. Erna Bright, I'm sure he has some words.
He's not up here. He's not scheduled to speak.
Okay, so, my name is John Taylor Kitchell, I'm chief of Sunbury Volunteer Fire Department. Central Communications Dispatch Center is crucial to law enforcement, emergency medical services, the fire services, and the citizens of Gates County, like it is in all communities. Now, I'm gonna talk about several things the sheriff did, and I assure you, we did not collaborate on, on our speeches. Communications serves three different services with three different requirements. For all emergency services, the accuracy and timeliness of our dispatch is crucial, as well as the support they give us during a call, as well as documentation. North Carolina Office of State Fire Marshals periodically grades fire departments, and the resulting grades are translated to an insurance rating that directly affects the property insurance rates of every home and business in the county. Communications is graded by OFSM in telecommunicators, response reporting, and dispatch circuits. In other words, the dispatcher, how many are on duty and their training, their job performance, timeliness, accuracy, and the thoroughness of the record keeping and their equipment. Communications is roughly 10% of a fire department's grade, while the water supply is nearly 40%. So right at 50% of a fire department's rating is based off two areas that we have little control over. We've been told the emergency management doesn't want anything to do with the supervision of communication. Obviously, the county manager doesn't want it, he's got enough to handle already. The situation begs the question, why would the sheriff, whose office is already underfunded, take responsibility of another underfunded department? The answer is, the sheriff is considering taking supervision of communications out of his sense to duty and service to the county he loves. Conventional wisdom says that y'all are getting rid of a problem, and if it fails, it's on him. There are three options for the management of communications in our local facility. You could hire an emergency manager that's willing to oversee it. You can make it a standalone department with an oversight board. Those options would take time, however. And this is a time, uh, this is a time-sensitive issue, and the sheriff can provide leadership immediately. So over years ago, the emergency management position was given a raise to supervise communications when Billy Wynn was emergency manager. when Billy Wynn was emergency manager. The current position had communications added to the job shortly before interviews for the position. And I'm told that offered salary was raised by $15,000. Are commissioners willing or set to reduce the emergency manager's salary by 15 and increase the sheriff's salary by $15,000 if it subs? A goal for the future would be to make communications a standalone department and take that $15,000 to add to the salary of a director position so it can attract a communications specialist with high credentials in the field. This director should report to a board make up of stakeholders. A seven-member board could include the sheriff, an appointee of his choosing, the EMS chief, and a appointee from the EMS board, a fire chief chosen by them, and a firefighter chosen by the Gates County Fire Department Association and the emergency manager. I would like to briefly speak on piece-out regionalization. The only situation that regionalization would be in Gates County's best interest if a regional authority between Proquemans, Chauan, and Gates County was formed, and the center be placed in Gates County. The obvious location for such a facility would be in the Hobbsville area on 32, where broadband fibers already installed. To sum up my comments, you need to do whatever you need to do to maintain a top-notch communication center to serve the emergency services and the citizens of Gates County. The sheriff can provide needed leadership and direction in the interim. However, communications requires proper funding, and we expect nothing less. Thank you for your time.
Sheriff Campbell? Do you have anything to add, or that's? I think she's got the notes that you-
That's basically it. But bottom line is, I care about our 911 center. I want to keep it here, and I'll do whatever I can to make it right, to make it run right. But I'm going to need some help. I'm going to need some help from you guys. And, like I said, I feel like I'm kind of sticking my neck out on the chopping block. Please, please don't wipe it off. I mean, I want to save this thing.
And something that has, the mission and the vision have been well identified, but something that hasn't been said, that I feel like should be said, Madam Chairman, and that is that it has been stated that the current supervisor, director, whatever, has stated to do not want that responsibility and do not want the 911 center.
She got it in the minutes? Okay. I've heard Sheriff Campbell, and as the chair of this commission board, I was sentenced, not sentenced, you feel like a sentence, of deciding what to do with 911. I was on Zoom with the state board a couple of months ago. Ms. Harris and the regional director and their finance officer, we had a Zoom meeting. The county manager was there. The EMT director was there, and then, of course, her staff. And I was asked to attend that meeting because of all the things that was going on with 911 over the past year and a half, you know, staff walking out in December. We had to move it until we could get that resolved, moved it back. And after the conversation with her, that's when I decided, after listening to everybody, I mean, you don't know how many people I've listened to. Something had to be done. And sometimes, when you're sitting in the middle of a situation, you have to weigh it. You know, you just weighed, you know, what we're going to do, and you do the best you can. That's when, I think it was one of the last meetings in August, that Commissioner Freeman brought it up. Inappropriately, Mr. Freeman, you remember. You brought it up at the end of the meeting, and I got you for it. You know better. But I told you when I'm sitting up here, I'm listening, I'm writing. You think I'm writing for nothing. I'm not playing tic-tac-toe up here. When I hear something, and people call my home, and the state board, you know, wants to talk to me, and they, you know, we talked a long time. And I talked some more to some more people. I even talked to the attorney. Because we're going to do what's always going to err on the side of safety and security in this county. We're going to have 911. We're not setting you up. Look at me.
Please, please.
Look at me.
Yes, ma'am.
And this demonizing this board is not helping. And demonizing the sheriff's department is not helping. Demonizing anybody in this county is not helping. And when I sit up here and I hear people say things, I know where they got it from. You won't let it go. You talk to me about not being seen. Why would I want to be seen? I'm not welcome. I'm not welcome. But whether I'm welcome or not, I'm going to always do what's best for this county. And when everybody in this room and on YouTube and everywhere else get to the point where they can put their personal agendas and personal biases and let go of the past and move forward, we'll be a better county, because we're better than this. The fire chief had their say. I didn't hear from anyone else like the other first responders, so I'm going to take that as an affirmative as far as supporting the movement from under the county to the office of the sheriff. That's what I'm hearing. So this is what I'm going to do as the chair. I'm looking down at my county attorney, the county attorney, the Honorable Pitt Godwin. We've had discussions about how to move forward, because there's no template to do this. So county attorney, I know you've been working on it on the side. We had a conversation last week leading up to this meeting, because we want to do it right. I think it's going to be a resolution. Or an ordinance, we're leaning toward a resolution right now, and he's nodding his head. He's going to draft that inclusive of, number one, the statutes that surrounds and underpins 911 in all the counties, the state board requires it. And also going to underpin that the finances or the budget stays with the county. We can't move it. It cannot go over to you. You're still going to have to apply or submit budgets and that's like that. We cannot move it. That was told to me by the state. That should not be a problem.
They have their own budget.
Yep, but you've got to-
Yes, ma'am.
You've got, the money comes through the county. People don't understand that either. But that's what I, I've got the statute that says that, and that's what we're going to follow, the administrative code. Also, we do not, as a county, ever release legal liability for anything that runs in this county. By statute, we're still liable. So we're not going to do anything to cause us to be, to raise the risk of being out of compliance or doing something that we're going to get in legal jeopardy or control. That's by statute. Those are two things she made sure that I understood. The county manager understands that as well. The county manager understands that as well. Everybody that I've been talking to understands that as well. And I was waiting for tonight just to implore you that this is not done under duress. This is going to be a choice that the county is making through the chair.
This is a big step.
It's a big step, and I took my time, and I'm going to take my time, because I want to make sure everybody understands, this is not a got-you, it ain't a us against them. We need to stop this. Stop it. Reset. I'm looking right at you, Sheriff Campbell.
I'm looking right at you too.
Mm-hmm. And I'm serious about this. Now, what we're going to do going forward, I have to allow the county attorney to draft that proposal, that resolution. And I'm going to ask him, put him on the spot. How long you think it would take to do that?
I would hope to have something presentable by the next meeting.
Next meeting, Sheriff. We're taking no action tonight, because I need to, we need to see that resolution. We need to see what it is, make it legal, make it, you know, make sure we got the statutes, administrative code in there. And I'm going to, when we get the draft, we will share that with you. So if you have any questions, that you can come back to the attorney and say, what is this? What does this mean? We're going to do this right. So we take no action tonight, except that I'm directing the county attorney to draft that resolution to transfer the operation of E-911 to the office of the sheriff. Is that acceptable?
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chairman, would it also be advisable to mention that there's no opposition?
Oh, I've got that. That's what I meant, because if you didn't send in, if you didn't sign up, this is, that's why, listen. This is why I separated the public comment from the first responders. We heard you, and I'm not saying we don't listen to you, the other, the public, but I wanted to make sure in the minutes that it was an affirmative as far as support and recommendation. That's why I did it that way. Okay? So I have a piece of paper here, and I'm writing on it. And only one that came to the podium was Mr. John Kitchell. He represents the firefighters, fire chiefs. That's why I'm doing it this way. I do things legally, I do things by administrative code. Some people don't understand that. But I make sure that when we do something as a board, we do it airtight with the county attorney in his office all the time, trying to make sure that what we do is done legal. So he's going to draft it. I think our next meeting is October the 5th. That's the special meeting, I believe.
That may be a little bit early for me.
How about the-
It's our regular meeting.
How about the regular meeting in October? I can't think of that date. Madam clerk, do you know what date that is, the next meeting?
I can tell you.
Ms. Hoffler's going to tell us. Make sure everybody-
19.
Then October the 19th, Sheriff Campbell. We'll have, before then, he'll have it drafted, give it to you, and you and your chief deputy can look at it, have any questions, go to him, because I'm not a lawyer, and this is going to be lawyered up. So on October the 19th, our regular meeting, we're going to put you on the agenda. Before then, you have the draft, you can look at it. One more question, county manager. Do we have the results of the peer assessment that was done August 31st for 911? The results?
The peer review.
The peer review.
I don't have a copy of it. They found some things, but it was not their main.
There is a couple of problems.
Okay, we'll make sure-
They were, there were a few issues.
We'll make sure that that's noted in the peer review on August 31st, and we'll go from there. So we have some things to tighten up, work with. But let me assure you, as I shut this down, this proposal, we're not going to do anything to set anybody up. Not going to do that. But you have to work with us also. Okay?
I intend to.
All right.
Because this has got to work, because the whole county's-
That's my point. It's got to work, because it's the county. It's not about one office versus another, one department. It's about this county. So the attorney's going to start working on that and all his other duties on his list for Gates County. And we're going to try to have a draft before the regular meeting, so if there are any tweaks or questions, he can explain it to you and your officer. Okay?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Thank you. Very good.
Are there any administrative reports that the commissioners want to pull out and take a look at? They're in the back of your packet before I shut this down for comments. Let's start with the commissioner's comments. Craddock, Mr. Craddock?
All right. Thank you all the citizens for coming out tonight. I was proud of that moment right there. It was true passion, both sides. That's what it's all about, is everybody working together and getting along. We're not always going to agree, but we can agree to disagree sometimes. But as long as we're moving the county forward and doing it for the right reasons, that's what matters. Thank you all.
Commissioner Owens? Again, thank everybody for being here. There's a lot of legwork that goes into the things that we talk about here on these, at these meetings. And to attach to some of the comments that Commissioner Craddock made, Gates County can go forward and go forward strong if we work together and put aside, you know, some of the harsh stuff. I could see the passion that the sheriff showed in his comments a while ago. You can't ignore that. And we want to see that 911 center prosper and do well and serve the citizens of the county like you expect it to.
Commissioner Hoffler?
I'd also like to thank everybody for coming. We can, we need to work together. We have large issues. People who talk to me, I tell them, water is number one. We've got to get this water built, with water straight. I want to go to my spigot every day and see water coming out. Number two is broadband. Our schools need it, our children need it, so that they can be competitive in this world. And if we're going to attract any type of business, they also need it. So that's my number two. And number three is to try to enlarge our tax base. I love Gates County. I want it to stay quiet and green and all, but we've got to increase our tax base. And that's why I'm working hard on tourism. Every time somebody comes to this county at that meal con, get them to stay here and spend a few more dollars. Stay at a guest house, or stay, go to the restaurants, or whatever. But we need to make sure we can increase that, because when they spend money in the county, that's tax revenue, and it's not property tax. And we've got, folks, everything's going up. You go to the grocery store, I go to the grocery store, and everything's going up. All our things that we do here, services to the county, they are going up. We've got to increase that tax base. Tourism is clean, and I think we can get a lot done. But we're looking for opportunities along that line. But listen, take care, have a safe weekend, enjoy it, and it's going to all work out.
Commissioner Freeman?
Thank you, ma'am. Want to realize what all of you have seen, what you do know, is that you look at us, but you've put us here. And this is a vote of confidence. The vote of confidence goes to us, but it comes from you. You picked us, we represent you. We're your voice, and we will continue to be your voice. What we represent are your needs, your wants, but most importantly, your future. So we should not, we don't sit here to intimidate you. We better not intimidate you, because we work for you. And you are a vote of confidence that put us here. We're also confident in you. So thank you for that, and stay safe.
County manager?
Yeah, I have no questions.
Okay. Mr. Godwin?
I think this has been one of the best meetings that I've been to. And I've been county attorney over 25 years. And some of the things that have been said, I hope will bring our county together and realize that we're small, but we can do big things, and that we need to put aside the small differences that have kept us from doing those things.
In closing, I thank everyone for soldiering on. My phone went off, because I had it set for three hours. That didn't work. But I'm deadly serious about what I'm saying. All these hurts, perceived hurts, real hurts, you've got to let them go. No, you don't have to, but I hope that you would. And work together, we're better together. We have too much work ahead of us to be sniping at any of us. We're better than this. When I get phone calls about these meetings, they're not positive. That's not what we want to be seen as in Gates County. The differences you have with individuals are your differences. You won't ever see me go at anybody having done it. It's how you perceived it. You won't ever see me go at anybody having done it. That's how you perceived it. But going forward, with the sheriff, and the water, and broadband, and housing, and economic activities, business as usual, we cannot go back there. We're not going to move forward like that. Let me make one more announcement. Summit, the company we hired to do the concept design for the county, is going to present a draft to us, to the board first, to take a look at it. It's a concept design that leads to the master plan for that land. The 144 acres of land that we paid $600,000 for is going to be designed with your input. I set it in the beginning, and now it's coming to fruition. Nothing happens overnight. So they have submitted a small grant, a draft, they're going to clean it up, and then each one of the board members is going to get that. And that's going to be, that's going to drive the master plan. And I know you don't particularly care for it, you keep bringing it up. County manager, I mean county attorney, we closed on that land in February, I believe. It's done. I know you disagree, and you have a right to disagree. But when you see that concept design, you can either have input, or you don't. When you see the master design, we hope you have input, or you don't. And some of the things you don't think you need may be in there, because it's not just for the next few years, it's for the future of this county. And sometimes, you got to have a vision that no one else has. And I'm speaking as the chair, and I know you don't like that either. It is what it is. And I'm doing the best I can in the middle of a mess. I'm just being honest tonight, because it's been months since we started this journey. And we've had some good progress. You don't see it, but we're making progress. And these people on this board are doing the best they can with the resources we have right now. We can't invent stuff. So that's my closing remarks. Again, I thank you for coming. We look forward to working with whoever wants to work with us, because we can't do this alone. We just can't. And I hope you understand that. And I cannot, in closing, I cannot legislate civility. All I can do is stick to the rules, regulations, policies, procedures that we have in place to run these meetings and to run this board. But I can't legislate civility or morality. Accountability, transparency, communication, integrity, honesty, loyalty, all of those things. She see me looking at her, she think I didn't write them down. But if you want them, that's what I'm giving you. You may not like the way I'm doing it, but I'm doing it. You can say anything about me you want, but you can't say I don't work. You cannot say I don't put the work in. And I'm not going to apologize for saying "I" when I'm the only one at the table. I can't make a "we" out of "I." And I'm going to keep on. And I know the commissioners don't want to hear it, but I'm tired of the shenanigans. But if you want, that's what you want. Statutorily, we have to give you public comments, and that's what we do. Yep. And you can keep on coming, talking about the same thing every week if you want to. That's fine. But we got work to do. And I hope you understand it. If you don't, I don't know what, I cannot spend any more energy trying to undo what was done 10 years ago, five years ago. I cannot do that. And some of this stuff that we're finding didn't happen yesterday, and you know what year it happened and who was in charge. You know. See you on Facebook. Y'all love me on Facebook. That chair, what we going to do about A-rated? I'm going to go home and get a popsicle. Motion to adjourn.
Yes, sir.
We are adjourned.